All the meetings are ordered at 6:02. Back into session. I'm sorry, what's that, Mike? Okay. Yeah, we lost the full feed. She would be able to see whatever's being put on. Yeah, it was coming on. Oh. Gotcha. I do. What do you need, I'm sorry?
I left my notepad and with my notes from the closed session. Oh, thank you. That should do it. Thank you. I'm not gonna just draw either. I'm gonna like take actual. I'm gonna, I have to have notes.
No problem. Whatever works. We'll get through it. Sorry for the delay, everyone. Could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Recording in progress.
Thank you. And when you get time, Michael, the roll call, please. Whenever you're ready.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. Report out on closed session.
There we go. The council met under closed session for two items. No reportable action was taken. However, for the minutes, please let the minutes reflect that Councilmember Cruz did not participate in item number two, under closed session, dealing with property negotiation due to her home being close to the nearby of the property being discussed.
Thank you, sir. Conflict of interest declarations.
Go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start. I need to recuse myself when we get to item F2, which is the engineer's report for 2022-23 on the lighting and landscape district when item, when the resolution for, I guess it's Zone 3, the cottages, because I live within the cottage.
Thank you.
To recuse myself from item number F2, Zone 1, which is also lighting and landscape for the Jefferson Springs.
Thank you. And that is because you live in the area.
Yeah.
And I would also be recusing myself from F2. Let's see, it's Zone 2 for Vintage Meadows, as I live in Vintage Meadows. Now, Councilmember Cruz and Councilmember Bagby do not have accusations other than those. Perfect. All right. Agenda review. Any changes or deletions?
Mayor, no changes to the agenda this evening.
Thank you, sir. B, public comments? Good. Any person wishing to speak to the City Council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any item on the council agenda at the time the item comes up for consideration. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Per City Council policy, three minutes are typically allotted to each speaker. If anyone in the audience would like to speak on anything not on our agenda, please come forward.
So this will take way less than three minutes. I am Nina Handchad, and I am the Director of the Cloverdale Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to thank the City Council and city staff for making Zoom a lot more audible. You can hear it, you can see it, and I just want to thank you because up till a couple of meetings ago, it was pretty tough. Couldn't read lips. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Nina. Anyone else in the audience? Please circle forward.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Bo Cantare. Here to speak about E4. Was wondering if we could potentially up my place to E1. I have a shift to work after this meeting. If that's okay with you guys.
I think you're referring to F4.
F4, I'm sorry, I apologize.
It's okay. Just making sure that I was still on the same page as you when that item comes, or that we get into that area for the new business, we can bring that up.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Seeing nothing? Any, no hands on the attendees list? We have no proclamations or presentations tonight. Is that correct, still?
That's correct, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. So move into the consent calendar. All items under consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the City Council unless any council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask that the minutes, the draft minutes for June 10th be removed for discussion.
So do you want to rescind your motion, or do you want us to have it?
Oh, sir, I'll modify it to consent calendar minus the June 10th minutes.
Perfect.
And I'll second that.
Perfect. Any public comment? Great. We get a roll call when you get a chance, Mike.
Yes. I've just been informed, too, that the audio on Zoom may not be working. So if we can confirm, Councilmember Cruz, can you hear me?
Yes, I did let Kevin know. And yes, I can hear clearly now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And with that, with the consent agenda, we will start with Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lenz?
Aye.
Okay, Councilmember Paula, regarding June 10th draft minutes.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to ask that those draft minutes, they're very, they're very brief. They don't really say a lot about what took place at the joint session there that we had. So I'd like to ask that maybe they come back at a future meeting with a little more information on, you know, what we did and kind of what the next steps would be. So that's all. Thank you.
Any other comment by any other council members? Councilmember Cruz? For head nod? Perfect. Okay. So there's no movement on that, and it'll be brought back to future meeting?
Mayor, just a note to let the record reflect that the minutes for June 10th under item D1 on the agenda were removed from the consent, and council has directed staff to bring those back with additional details.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Okay, E, communications? Anything written from the council? Seeing none? Okay, moving into F. Is there anyone against moving F4 to F1 for the gentleman that has to work tonight?
Mr. City Attorney, do we need a motion to modify the agenda?
Well, we could definitely do a motion.
No, I will offer that, that we move F4 up to the top of, make that the next item.
Okay, so we had a motion, a second. Anyone against? Seeing no nays, we'll move into F4. Public hearing to seek approval from some.
I'm sorry. Yeah, can we do, just because we do have a member on Zoom, and when we have folks on, participating on Zoom pursuant to the Brown Act, we just need to do the roll call.
Sounds good. Michael, could you give us a roll call on that then?
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lenz?
Aye.
That was a motion by Bagby and a second by Paula, in case it wasn't in the record. Okay, so F4.
Mayor, council members, this item is the required public hearing in order for the city to begin the process of recouping our expenses related to a code enforcement that we conducted last October at 305 Portofino. The nature of the code enforcement was really cleaning up the front yard where a lot of stuff had been accumulating. Over time, we did go through our normal process of trying to contact the tenant and the owner to get compliance. We ultimately had to file an abatement order and clean it up ourselves. The total cost was $9,855. This included a contractor who actually removed the material and the chief's time, my time, and Raffel's time. Since we've put the notice out regarding this, the property owner has contacted me and is willing to set up a payment program, and he has already made one payment and suggesting that he continues to make monthly payments, which we're, staff recommends that we pursue that option. The other option, of course, is to file a lien against the property. If the council is okay with us pursuing the payment schedule, we'd do that. If that does not work out, we can always pursue the lien as well. In order to do the lien, we wouldn't have, we'd have to come back with a resolution on consent. In order to file the lien at the county, they would need to see that. But our recommendation tonight is that we pursue the payment plan. Again, the property owner has made a good faith payment today, and so that would be our recommendation. I don't know if you want to add something, Jose?
I think you covered it well. And again, this is just a process that's laid out in our municipal code for, to add the cost recovery as a special assessment through the tax roll. As Kevin mentioned, the property owner is willing to make payments and pay for the costs. I know we have done this in the past with other code enforcement cleanups or other code enforcement actions we've taken. If the council does move forward, I think staff is recommending that the council does move forward with the recommendation as stated, however, only to kind of have that as an option in case, for some reason, the payments break down. We would be coming back with a resolution, and if the council takes this action, we'd like it to be as amended to include a resolution, to bring back a resolution at a future meeting.
Thank you. All right, we'll bring it to the council. Councilmember Bagby, please.
Thank you, Kevin. What are, how often are the payments made, and what is the length of the payment plan?
What's being suggested by the property owner is $500 a month, which the first payment was 500. So it's, you know, it's 8,900, so that would be over a year, a year's time. I don't know, maybe the property owner who suggested that payment could come down and explain. We could suggest that we want it paid off in one year, and, you know, divide that up, it'd be about $827 in that case. Or we could, you know, continue on with the owner's suggestion of 500.
Councilmember Cruz?
I think we need to increase the amount if we want to pay it in one year, or perhaps we need to have a standard timeline.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, Kevin, you said the payments were due on a specific date?
Well, we would, we would set up a plan. We've already set up an account. He's made one payment today, so we could make, you know, this is the monthly payment. Suzie, I don't know if you had any thoughts on that, but we would invoice him monthly. We can set, you know, the middle of it. If he had some suggested day that made it easier for him, maybe we could consider that, or we could just, you know, the 16, the middle of the month.
Well, the only thing that I'd like to see is an automatic trigger filing on the property. If it falls 30 or 60 days past due, just immediately file on the real estate. I mean, it's just the cost of doing business, I think, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, a quick question. Is there statute of limitations on filing that with the?
As far as it's with the, with the county assessor's office, I think they do it once a year. It's our tax, the tax roll, it's around, actually, it's around this time. I'm not sure what the deadline is, Kevin, if you've acquired there. So we would be looking at when the assessments go out. I know, given the action now, it kind of codifies, or at least it has the action of, pretty much, looking at all those fees as justified by the council, which is a required step. There's no statute of limitations as far as a year, but we were looking at, obviously, if payments aren't made now, we'd be looking at bringing back that resolution right away and make sure we get something over to the county. But I haven't seen a statute of limitations there, especially if we're doing the ratification of the costs today.
The other second comment, I would like to see something in written form, a written agreement that's signed, and if that agreement's violated, I agree, you should automatically move into the next step of filing it. Thank you.
Thank you, and I completely agree with that. So with that said, I'll just open up to public. It's okay? I'm sorry. Yes, please, go ahead.
Yeah, I also, I want to, I appreciate that the property owner did come forward, and I would fully support the, if they've done the math themselves and they can budget 500 a month, I think that that's reasonable. So, but I do, you know, support the other comments from the council members. I'd like to make sure that there is a written agreement and that there is a failure to pay, you know, for example, for two months, that then it would, it would go to the next step. But I'd like to see all of that in writing. But I, yeah, I really do appreciate where the property owner is coming from and gave us a number that, that he knows, that he's really pretty confident that he could afford. So I'd like to support moving forward with that number.
So, sir, you said you were here, are you representing the owner, or are you here just to speak on the item?
I'm here representing the other enders.
Have you come forward for me, please? Make sure they give you ample time, so.
Appreciate it.
Please state your name for us, so we know who you are.
My full name is Bo Daniel Cantare.
Ace, what was your last name, sir?
C-A-N-T-A-Y-R-E.
Sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may, so at that property, we're dealing with a lady who's been a lifelong resident of Cloverdale. She has agreed to pay the, pay the back fees and all of the accumulated nuisance charges as of this far. She's on a fixed income, and she's a retired First Nation lady, so she, she said that 500 is what she could afford monthly. And I assure you that if she's not able to come with the 500, that we'll cover it from our end, just to stay in good standing with the city of Cloverdale. This has kind of been an ongoing situation that we've been dealing with. During the moratorium, we didn't really have an option to remove her from the property. As she's gotten older in health, she's dealing with a little bit of failed mental capacity. So, and she's a handicapped as well, so for her to be able to physically move the items on her front yard wasn't, wasn't an option for her. I went up there personally and, you know, did what I could to try to appease Raffi, a very nice guy, by the way. And that was okay for a while, but it wasn't a full fix. As a landowner, I'm unable to remove the property from her property or from the land without incurring some kind of litigation against me. So if I would have been told or notified that, you know, it was, the abatement was served, the warrant was served, I mean, I would have given her, hey, this is, it's us or nothing, you know? We don't want to trouble the city, we don't want to trouble anybody else. But we were never notified with a, with a letter or anything, anything that we've ever been given as far as fines. We've, you know, we quickly handled with the city, paid them off immediately, and then went to the tenant to have her pay us back. So I basically or humbly ask you that if there's any way we could reduce this cost for the tenant herself, like I said, she's an elderly woman, First Nation lady, really, really nice, but she's getting up there in age, and I don't believe she has a lot of help. I mean, I'm the only one here fighting for her. So, I mean, if you take that into consideration, I would greatly appreciate it. And basically, just want to thank you for your time, and I apologize for my family and for the tenant for having to come to this.
Thank you, Bo. I'm sure, if you don't mind, since you're representing, I'm going to ask the council if they have any questions for you. Vice Mayor?
Well, I guess my only concern is this happening again. I know in the past, the neighbors were quite concerned about the blight that this property had fallen into, and I know Councilmember Paula spent a lot of time trying to work with the property owner, but for some reason, the property owner didn't come up and take care of the situation. And I'd like to have some assurances if it happens again, and when the property owner gets a letter that they get in their car, they come up here and clean up the property.
Yeah, Roger, that's, sir, sorry. As I've, as I've spoken with this lady, she, she's not really great at responding to emails or if you knock on her door, as some people know, she doesn't really respond. So it's one of those deals where I, I let her know that I said, if this, if anything like this happens again, if the accumulation starts to pile up again, I've since hired a gardener to take care of the front of the property on a monthly basis, and she's going to give me, I live in Petaluma, so it's a little difficult for me to come back and forth, but to visually check, but, so the gardener's going to give me once a month progress reports of what's going on in the front of the house. If it gets to a point where, you know, we feel like it's in code violation, we're definitely going to let her know, look, this is your last chance. If you don't take care of what you need to take care of and stop accumulating items, then, you know, we're going to have no choice but to, you know, to ask her to move on. I mean, after 20 years in the property, it's kind of a tougher thing to do, but, I mean, it's necessary, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I think the costs need to be recovered. I'm not in favor of reducing them. Their actual costs, they cost the city, and I know they spent considerable time trying to get compliance, and they just were not getting it. I realize there's circumstances that you explained, but these are real costs, and they need to be repaid back. So I, I'm not in favor of reducing it, but I'm definitely in favor of putting it into an affordable monthly payment plan to make it work.
I appreciate that. If I may address that for a second. So I noticed on the itemized list of breakdown of costs, it had the, the city planner, Mr. Raffi, being paid $147 an hour for 37 hours of the work. Well, if you look up what he gets paid yearly, it's $92,000, which breaks down to about $47 an hour. So, I mean, I'd like to ask this council where that extra $100 an hour is coming from. And, I mean, we have no objection to paying the $1,916 for the 40 hours that he did put in, but to charge us $5,880 a week for the 40, for 40 hours that he did put into this, I'm just kind of curious as to where that number came from.
The wage would, or the, the cost would also include any retirement, any health insurance, any benefit that he receives is included in that.
Okay. Okay. Council?
It's all your benefits.
Councilmember Cruz, do you have any comments or questions?
Yes, I do. What I want to have clear here is who is ultimately responsible for paying the city. It is the owner of the property, isn't it?
Was that a question directed to me?
That's correct, councilmembers. At the end of the day, it becomes a special assessment, ends up going on the tax roll. At the end, it's the property owner that ends up being responsible for all nuisances in the jurisdiction. Of course, we go to the tenants, but at the end of the day, it's the property owner is responsible for their property.
So the negotiation here is not with the tenant. The negotiation here is with the property owner. I just want to make sure that that is clear to the person at the podium.
It is clear, yes.
Any other comments? I'm going to ask you to sit down so I can see if there's anybody else in the public that wants to make any comments.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time, sir.
Thank you, everybody.
Any other comments from the public at this time? I see no hands on our attendees list, so I will bring it back to the dice.
Happy to make a motion. I believe staff had direction. Are we looking for a quick agreement to come back and be put on consent calendar?
Sorry to interrupt you. Councilmember Bagby, but we can't hear you. If you can move the microphone a little bit.
How's this? There we go. Through the, through the chair, if I may. Are we looking to bring, make a motion to bring an item back and have it approved on consent or something like that, City Manager?
Councilmember Bagby, I would recommend that you direct staff to bring back a resolution that adopts, formally adopts the cost report and, and authorizes city staff to enter into a written agreement with, with the property owner. We can, if, if it's okay with council, we'll bring it back as a consent item so that we have the full authority, one to, one, you're acknowledging the cost report that's in the agenda packet, but also the full authority to enter into an agreement in a form approved by the city attorney to seek recovery of the costs from the property owner.
And just to add a little clarity, I'm sorry, we'd be, we'd still be looking for the recommended council action under the agenda report, and then adding, of course, what the city manager just said. So as amended, to add the ability to come back with a resolution formally. Regarding the agreement itself, I know that that could be done more on the administrative level with the property owner, given the guidance of the council, given that they have already come forward with giving payments, and that's, that's already started. But we would like to have the consider and confirm by order the cost report and authorize the imposition of a special assessment on the property at 305 Portofino Way, and also the addition, having staff bring back a resolution ratifying this action, and if needed. And the reason why it's if needed is because, again, we're going to be entering into the agreement. Hopefully, we won't have to do the assessment, but we would still want to follow the municipal code's procedure so we could have all this in place, so we don't have to start the process over.
I'd be happy to do that. And I, it sounds like there, before I make that motion, it sounds like there's support for keeping the payment level at the $500 a month. And if that is the case, then, would, would you want to leave that up to staff to negotiate, or would you like that to be part of the motion?
I, I think we're hearing the direction, and that's fine if it's part of the motion. That's why it's clear. That way it's clear.
Well, then I'll just say so moved, so I don't have to repeat all of that, because I'm not sure I could.
And I'll second that.
Well, I've had my hand up for a while.
I understand, I understand. Councilmember Cruz, it is your turn now. Go ahead.
Before we, before we go ahead and move, no, I just want to acknowledge that this, the person who came to the podium is advocating for the tenant. I understand. But whatever agreement is with the tenant is between the owner and the tenant. We don't need to be preview of that. And we acknowledge her condition and her situation, but the agreement is with the tenant independent of what arrangements are made with, the agreement is with the owner rather than with the tenant. I just want to make sure that that is clear and that there's no, no confusion about how come it is 500 versus 685 or whatever amount has been recommended in the past, in the past, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mayor, just, thank you, Councilmember. The, the person at the podium was actually representing the, the owner. I think it was more of advocating for the tenant, of course, but I think the, any agreement would be with the landowner of the property, with the actual, with the owner.
So the last part, I just want to make sure is clear with the council's support with your motion, is Councilmember Bagby wanted a 60-day window, and I know you talked about 30, so I wanted to clarify it to 60. I'm, I'm loving the motion, I just want to make sure you. Perfect. I just wanted that on the record. Thank you. Okay, so we had a motion and a second. Michael, when you're ready?
Can we repeat the second for the record?
Councilmember Paula was the second.
And was it for 60 days, Mr. Mayor? I'm sorry, I.
It's, it's 60-day missed payment before it would go into the next step.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
And Mayor Lance?
Aye.
Thank you, sir, for coming in tonight. I appreciate it. Okay, we'll go back to F1, consideration and possible adoption of the resolution establishing, updating the schedule of fees and charges for city services, and repealing previously adopted and conflicting fees and charges for such services.
Mayor, I'll turn this over to our Finance Director, Suzy Holmes.
Thank you. Okay, so what we're looking at tonight is the master fee schedule. It's something that we come back to every year. We look at it, we marry it up with the time that our employees are spending on certain tasks, and then marrying that with their fully loaded salaries and benefits. This year, because we moved to OpenGov, we were better to, we were better able to ascertain the actual hourly rate, so we were seeing some of the rates actually decreased because of that. And then, some of the rates increased more than others, simply because we have vacant positions that are now being filled with contract employees that cost a little more. The actual document breaks out exactly how much each fee is increasing or decreasing, so you can go through and look at that. Some of the, some of the fees look like they're really increasing a lot, or decreasing a lot, but that's typically when you're talking about $20 going to $30, and you have such a small difference that it's creating a larger, than, a more out-of-scale increase or decrease. When, specifically when we're looking at cannabis charges, we are, we are not recommending that any of the fees change at all when it comes to the permit fees. For community development fees, they range from a 31% decrease to a 43% increase, but if you take the total charges, the overall is a 4% decrease. So that kind of explains where I was going earlier. Public works fees are decreasing between 9 and 11%, and special events are decreasing a little bit as well. After speaking with our employees, they said that some of the larger events didn't require as much time as what we had accounted for last year, and so we reduced that. And that was essentially because we moved to OpenGov, so it wasn't requiring as much time. What we're asking tonight is to approve and adopt this master fee schedule, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Suzy, Councilmember Bagby, would you like to? Councilmember Cruz, any questions or comments? Okay, Councilmember Paula, Vice Mayor?
Just one, Suzy. I think I already know the answer, but I'm going to ask you anyhow. The fees, we are only responsible for the city fees. We are not responsible for the school or the fire district. But in the past, I believe we notified them that we were doing a fee increase.
We would notify the school and the fire department?
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, just to make sure that they were keeping abreast with their fees.
Okay.
Am I right in that, David, or was that another city I-
Vice Mayor, I think with respect to school fees and fire fees, the council has adopted a resolution that enables us to charge and collect fire fees on behalf of the fire district, and we remit those fees to the fire district. The school district, we refer developers and such to the school district to actually collect and, or charge and collect the fees. But on your, on the development impact fee schedule, there is a, the fire fee is listed, the fire impact fee, and we do adjust that annually along with the other fees in accordance with the Consumer Price Index. But other than that, there are, you know, no other changes to the fees without, you know, full discussion with representative agencies.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I like this, it's more precise. I don't know what else to say. I like numbers, and I like it's precise. So I, no other comments from the-
It's actually, I just wanted to add that this is another example of OpenGov really giving us really good information in us making adjustments, so that we can provide great service. And so I think that was, this is just one more example of that being the right move. So thanks for pushing us in that direction, Suzy.
I'll open it up to the public. Any comments from anyone in the public? Seeing none? Any attendees on Zoom? No hands from the attendees? Bring it back to the dais.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce City of Cloverdale, City Council Resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale, establishing and updating the schedule of fees and charges for city services, and repealing previous adopted and conflicting fees and charges for such services.
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
Motion from Paula, second from Vice Mayor. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye.
Okay, F2, the Engineers' Report for Fiscal Year 2223 for the City of Cloverdale Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District. Set the time and date of the public hearing for Zone 1 to 7.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the council. I want to, at this time, ask our City Clerk to allow Mr. Paul Wade in, as well as our Park Superintendent Hector Galván. They are attendees. And go ahead and promote them to panelists. And while we're waiting for Mr. Wade to join us, I'll introduce him. Mr. Wade is our Engineer of Record with Coastland Civil Engineering, and he will provide council with an overview of the action tonight. This is part of your annual process to put in place and establish-
Let's just get here.
Landscape and Light, or assessments for your Landscape and Lighting Assessment Districts, or Landscape and Lighting Assessment District and its seven zones. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Wade, and Mr. Wade will give us an overview of the annual engineering report that's included in your packet. Paul?
Thank you, David. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. The City of Cloverdale Landscape and Lighting Assessment District was initially formed in 1997 with the Jefferson Springs development, and other subdivisions have been annexed over time, so there are now seven zones. Each of the seven zones operates independently of the others in terms of expenditures and assessments. The city must undertake certain annual proceedings each year in order to levy assessments in the upcoming fiscal year. These proceedings are regulated by the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972 and by State Proposition 218. These proceedings typically require three council meetings. On January 26th this year, the council initiated proceedings by appointing Coastland as the engineer in work to prepare the annual engineers' report. On April 27th, the council adopted resolutions of intent to levy and collect assessments, and set the date for the public hearing for June 22nd. Tonight, the council conducts a public hearing and then may adopt resolutions authorizing the levying of the assessments. Copy of the Engineers' Report for Fiscal Year 202223 is attached to the staff report, and it includes line item budgets for each zone. There are proposed increases in the budgets for all seven zones, ranging from around 1% to 19%, and overall, it's an average increase of 7%. As was discussed on April 27th, the current estimates for the fiscal year 2122, that's this current fiscal year we're in, at the end of June, are projected to be higher than what was projected when we prepared the Engineers' Report for the current fiscal year last April, May. So consequently, there's additional reserves to be utilized, and that results in recommended decreases in the annual assessments for proposed for Zones 1 and 2. Assessments for Zones 2, 4, and 7 are proposed to remain unchanged. The assessment amounts for Zones 5 and 6 are proposed to increase, and the assessment for Zone 6, that's Brookside Terrace, is proposed to increase to the maximum allowed without valid homeowners. Specifically, those changes are Zone 1, Jefferson Springs, a decrease of $70.26 to an assessment of $155.78 per ESD, essentially per property, per equivalent single-family dwelling. Zone 2, Vintage Meadows, there's no change. It's going to remain, proposed to remain at $262. Zone 3, the cottages, recommended a decrease of $145.22 to an assessment of $274.78. Zone 4, the vineyards, no change, proposed to remain the same as current at $324.54. Zone 5, I O L Ranch, proposed increase of $20.24 to $120.2 cents per ESD. Brookside Terrace, an increase of $28.88 for an assessment amount of $716.38. And Zone 7, Sunrise Hills, no change, remaining at $201.78. In 2011, the city council established a policy of a target minimum reserve fund balance of 25% of operating expenses for each zones. All of the zones, except for Zone 6, are projected to end next fiscal year with reserves at or near the 25% target minimum. Zone 6 is projected to have zero reserves. And again, those percentages will change when we get around to talking about this next year. There are general fund contributions for Zones 2 and 6. For Zone 2, it is to fund the general benefit contribution for Vintage Meadows Park, and it's $10,594 this year. And for Zone 6, it's just under $500, and it's to balance the budget. Each of the zones has a built-in inflation adjustment to the maximum allowed assessment based on the Consumer Price Index. Of course, we took that at the end of last year, not currently, because it's much higher now, but for last year, it was 4.2%, and those are built into the resolutions. There are four resolutions to account for potential conflicts of interest. Zone 1, Jefferson Springs, Zone 2, Vintage Meadows, Zone 3, the cottages, and the last one, Zones 4 through 7. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Paul. Let's start up here at the dais. I think, Councilmember Bagby?
I'm good.
Councilmember Cruz, any questions or comments?
No, it's been thoroughly discussed. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to open it up to the public at this time.
And Mayor, if I may, just because there may be discussions, and it was we've done last, what we did last time, just because these, some of the zones have council members recusing themselves, if we could potentially, just to be very clear, and that way no council member ends up discussing any item that they shouldn't, maybe taking them one resolution at a time, with the council member recusing themselves, leaving the dais, open it up to the public, coming back, voting on that specific resolution, and then going, and so on for the rest of them.
Perfect. And so, for the public, if, what that means is there's four different resolutions for the different districts on our agenda. Each of us live in some of those areas, so we can't be part of those voting. So I'll take the first resolution, which is Jefferson Springs area for Zone 1. Vice Mayor, you'll have to recuse yourself.
Yes.
If you don't mind, I'll go through as many as we can, just kind of go through them. When he comes back, you can take mine. Okay, so a Zone 1, Jefferson Springs, do we have any public comment? Seeing none, and no hands on the attendees' list.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to recommend the item. Resolution approving the annual engineers' report, confirming the assessment diagram and the annual assessment amounts, and authorizing the levying and collection of assessments for fiscal year 2022, 2023, for the Cloverdale Landscape and Lighting Assessment District for Zone 1 pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972.
I second.
Thank you. Says Councilmember Bagby and Councilmember Cruz for the second.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0 with one of them staying. Joe, do you mind going on this one? I'll just keep doing all the ones that I'm sitting in, and then I'll have Vice Mayor do the last one. So next, we'll move on to Zone 3, which is the cottages.
I'll refuse myself.
Councilmember Paula is recusing himself, since he lives in the vicinity. Any public comment? Please, sir, come forward.
Oh, Dan Bretchlin, I live in the cottages. I was surprised that our assessments went from a high of $496 last fiscal year to $274 this year, and I was kind of trying to figure out why in the world that happened. So what I did is I, I set up a chart here, going back seven years, plotting the budget and the actual expenses year by year. And what I discovered is that our reserves, going back to the 1516 fiscal year, they were, they started out, they were about $17,700. This year, they ballooned up to $69,100, well, a little over $69,000. And so, to me, that means that these budgets in these years have basically been charging us too much for, for our assessment. And so, I started to look at this budget, and I discovered certain things, which is kind of interesting. And these are things that you won't know unless you chart it out like I did here. But anyway, there are seven line items in the budget that have the same dollar amount for four to seven years, meaning that for like seven years, the same dollar amount keeps plugging in, year after year after year, with no consideration to the actual. And so what happens is, we're being charged way more than what is expended. Here's, here's an example. Contract services, and that, in the past, is the money that we use to pay Cal Fire for their crews to come and do weed whacking and all that kind of stuff. So for the last two, four, five years, we've been paying $2,500 a year for that. The only problem is, is Cal Fire doesn't supply crews anymore, and we haven't paid for them for six years. But still, we're getting charged $2,500 bucks. Okay, so if you do a three-year average, we spent $364 in three years, but we're still being charged 25. Okay? There's another interesting one. Operating supplies. We've been charged $4,020 for four years. Not $4,025 or $4,000, but $4,020 every year. The three-year average is $11.56. So, just doesn't make sense why these numbers keep being plugged in. And this is a real easy one. On our electric bill here, we've been charged $650 for four years and 600 after that. And that is appropriate for the four meters we used to have. But of the four meters, two of them haven't been in use for years. We've been paying on them for years. I discovered this, got Hector to, to work on it, and we got two meters canceled. And so our cost last year was $247, so we're only paying for two meters, not four. So the actual amount should be closer to 300, not the $650 that we continually be, being charged for. So I know that when you look at the budget, you don't have this kind of data. You don't have the time to, you know, to analyze it and all that kind of stuff. But I, I think we should come up, we should, in the budget, we should add two more columns. One column is a three-year running average, and another column is years-to-date. Then you guys can go right down through there and see what our actual costs are, and see what we are being budgeted for. And from that, I think you can make some, some decisions, because what our assessments are, is a tax on us. And this is a tax that we don't get to vote on, unlike other taxes. And so, it needs to be accurate. And going from, you know, $496 to $274, there's a problem there with our budgeting process.
Mr. Bretchlin, could I ask a favor of you? Could I ask you to email that to me?
Pardon me?
Can I ask you to email that to me?
Certainly.
So that I can, I can pass it on to the people in the city that do this?
Okay, I don't have your email address, but I guess I can find it somewhere.
It is on, it is on the side of my trucks, it is on the website, and I will call you with it if you would like. Or I will come to your house and provide you a card, whatever you need.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
I appreciate you putting in all the work on that.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to, or Paul, anybody want to respond to that?
Do you want to close the public hearing before we respond to it?
Thank you.
Don't respond?
No, no, go ahead, please.
Oh, okay.
I'm not, I am not closing the public hearing yet.
Okay. I think the best response would be that, you know, using the last three years as not a good average with the COVID and everything that happened. And he's right, we weren't able to get Cal Fire, we weren't able to do a lot of the things, and we heard a lot of, we heard a lot about that. And so this budget is to remedy some of the things that did fall behind and, and that weren't done. When, to say that we were charging for something that wasn't happening, I mean, I understand where Mr. Bretchlini is coming from, but that money goes back into, and it doesn't just go away, it's still there. It goes back into their reserves and into their contingency, and that's the reason that we were able to reduce, reduce it. And I mean, I don't know what's going to happen in the future, but that, that's the best answer that I can.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Hector.
Please, Hector, go ahead.
First of all, thanks, Paul, and Mr. Bretchlini for bringing this information forward. From the maintenance point of view, I just want to, I want to just bring, bring to you guys a few things. They might have a little bit of change of the budget. One of the reasons, one of the reasons why the, the assessment is a little bit lower is due to the fact that I have been reaching out to several volunteer groups. I know Councilmember Paula was helping with that at one point. So we've been giving some volunteer groups to, to help with the less technical tasks. And as far, you know, such as spreading mulch and weed abatement. Another reason why maybe it's a little bit lower too, and I don't have the numbers here with me, due to the drought, we were, you know, we were only able to water two days a week. So I know that, that brought the cost monthly for, for water, water use. So just, just a couple of things out there, so Mr. Bretchlini is, just so Mr. Bretchlini is aware of it.
Thank you, Hector, I appreciate that. All right, six fifty-five will close public comment for the public hearing. Bring him back to the dais.
I'd be happy to offer the, the resolution, a resolution approving the annual engineer's report confirming the assessment diagram and the annual assessment amounts, and authorizing the levying and collection of assessments for fiscal year 2022, 2023 for the Cloverdale Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District for Zone three pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972.
Seconded by Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye.
Senator Paula? If you guys don't mind, we'll move on to a resolution for Zone four through seven. Okay, any comments from? Seeing none, open up for public comment. Seeing none. We've got a little bit of time. Zones four through seven.
Four through seven.
It's resolution number four, attachment four.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer the resolution by title only.
Okay, are we good on time? As a public hearing?
Yes, we opened up the public hearing, brought it back, closed it.
Good, thank you, just making sure.
A resolution of the City Council, City of Cloverdale, approve an annual engineering report confirming the assessment diagram and the annual assessment accounts, and authorizing the levy and collection of assessments for fiscal year 2022, 2023 for the Cloverdale Landscape and Lighting Assessment District for Zones four, five, six, and seven.
Second.
We have a motion in a second.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye.
Moving on to resolution for Zone three, I'll be recusing myself.
Zone two.
Zone two, sorry, I apologize.
Thanks for keeping attachment numbers in Zones concurrent. Kudos to staff.
City Clerk, please let the records reflect that Mayor Lance has removed himself from the dais for this item. So with that being said, I'd like to go ahead and see, Council, any questions on Zone two before I open it up for public comment? Let me open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to address the City Council on this item, Lighting and Landscape District for Vintage Meadows, please come up. Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close that, bring it back to the dais, and is there a?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, I'd like to offer the resolution.
Thank you.
A resolution approving the annual engineer's report confirming the assessment diagram and the annual assessment amounts, and authorizing the levying and collection of assessments for fiscal year 2022, 2023 for the Cloverdale Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District for Zone two pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972.
I second.
Seconded by Paula. Resolution offered by Councilmember Bagby. Michael, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Vice, Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye, thank you.
Moving on to F three, adopting a resolution to approve a precise development plan and design review for the Vista Oaks subdivision.
Mayor, this item is going to be presented by Kevin Thompson, Assistant City Manager, Community Development Director.
Mayor, councilmembers, yeah, this item is the proposed approval of a precise development plan and design review for the Vista Oaks project. It's a thirty-three unit, single-family detached family project on forty-two acres, located at the end of Vista View Drive and Cloverdale Boulevard, North Cloverdale Boulevard. Before I get into it too much, we did get some correspondence regarding this project from Mr. Tononato, John Mercer, and Nancy Lloyd. And I don't know if they're in attendance tonight, but you can see that their correspondence was in the packet. Also, we have the team from Thompson Development, who's going to walk us through the project in a little more detail, but I'll just kind of set up, set them up and give you a little bit of, a little bit of background. You can see in the agenda report, this project's been around for a long time in some form or another. This current form has been around for about four years, and this would be its fourth public hearing. You may recall back in October of 2018, the council pretty much did really the heavy lifting on this project when you adopted a mitigated neg deck, tentative subdivision, preliminary development plan, and general plan amendment. So there was a lot of discussion at that time about the project. So what we're focused on now is kind of this, like I said, the precise development plan. And that's kind of a plan that looks really specifically at each lot, defines a building envelope, where the house will go on that lot, has some details about setbacks, fencing, landscaping, and lighting. So it's really the finely grained sort of plan that really is the capstone of all the work that's been done at this point. The design review is, is simple, it's the design of the homes, and I think the architect's going to walk us through what those homes look like. And just, the Planning Commission did review and recommend unanimously approval of this precise development plan and design review. We did amend one condition as a result of the conversation at the Planning Commission, which was to prohibit construction traffic along Vista View, and I think everyone is in agreement that that was a good idea, given the shape of the road on that side. So I guess with that, I turn it over to Mr. Dobell, who's, it looks like he's going to be the one giving the presentation tonight.
Thank you, thank you, Kevin. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, it's nice to see everybody again. I provided in the packet the presentation we gave at the Planning Commission. What I'd like to do tonight, if it's okay with you, is I'm going to abbreviate that presentation. I'm basically going to just roll through what was done in 2018 when you all approved, or when the City Council approved the previous entitlement for the project. And then I'm going to invite our architect up to just walk you through some of the design elements of the homes, because you did not see those in 2018. Thank you. Do we have the presentation of our presentation? Yeah, that's absolutely fine. In fact, I'm going to have you jump ahead to some slides, so I'll give you those page numbers. So we'll start with the project team. So here with, with us tonight is the project architect, Polsky Pearlstein, Jared Polsky is. I think you have it. Great. My name is Kevin Dobell, I'm with Lakewood Associates. Paul Thompson was planning to attend tonight, he's the owner of Thompson Development. He had, did have a family emergency, so was not able to make it tonight. Also with us, if you scroll down just slightly, is our landscape architect, Rob Cox with Tangrim, and Alyssa Morash is the project's real estate agent with W Real Estate. Next slide, please. Here's just a brief overview of the project site, forty-two acres on the hillside, it's north of downtown. There is some past historic grading on the property, there's also a road that runs through, that's an old, basically dirt road. It is just across the street from the Hamburger Ranch. Next slide, please. As Mr. Thompson mentioned, in 2018, the City Council approved the tentative map and preliminary development plan entitling this project. At the time, several issues were resolved and conditioned onto the project to resolve some of the concerns. If you could give me the next slide, please. Those main topics were site stability, so there's some landsliding and drainage issues that were resolved through conditions of approval. Visual impact analysis was presented and also resolved, and then the addition of a private open space easement, twenty-six acres of private open space. If you wouldn't mind going to slide twenty? Great. So tonight's objective is to meet with you, have you review the Planning Commission's determination and the project. This is the design review and a precise development plan review. And all of these elements were incorporated into this subdivision. There are detailed plans in the public record and in the file, there are also renderings. Next slide, please. This is just a three-color rendering of the entrance to the Vista Oaks subdivision off of North Cloverdale Boulevard. Next slide, please. I will just point out before I invite our architect, Jared Polsky, up. There are thirty-three lots in this subdivision, but we have precise development plans for thirty-two. The thirty-third lot is not proposed for development at this time. When that development is proposed for that home, and that home site is designed, it will come back to design review. So it will go through the same process again. And with that, I'd like to invite the project architect, Jared Polsky, up to just walk you through the architecture, and then we'll conclude and be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. My name is Jared Polsky of Polsky Pearlstein Architects. I'll be very brief, our, maybe you can go to the next slide. Our design inspirations for this subdivision are simple, gable-roofed farmhouses. Because of the site topography, the wide variation of the site's shapes and sizes, and the lovely mature trees on the site, we ended up with eleven very different house plans, each suited to their specific site. And for a thirty-two lot subdivision, this is a high number of unique floor plans relative to the total number of lots. The floor plans, you can go to the next slide. This is just some pictures of some of the subdivisions in town. Next slide. And I could walk you through all the floor plans, I'm sure you have them in your package. But every plan has a large spacious great room with a kitchen, dining, and family room. And all except one scheme E, all the great rooms have vaulted ceilings. All the rooms, all the great rooms open up to the outside. Every house has at least three bedrooms, and some have four, and some even have five bedrooms. The houses all share a simple, clean, understated farmhouse aesthetic. They vary by color, by material selections and form in response to the specific characteristics of each site. And in addition to the eleven unique home types, we've also proposed five different exterior treatments to further increase the diversity of the housing stock in the development. This is all done in the service of avoiding, trying to avoid a kind of cookie cutter subdivision. All the houses will follow wooey guidelines, wildland urban interface guidelines for fire safe, fire-resistant construction. All will have energy-conscious features, high levels of insulation, all electric appliances, and a solar upgrade for all the homeowners. And I hope, you could flip through the rest of the images. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
So if you could please go to slide, all the way to the end. Okay, and then go back two slides. Great. So our landscape architect is here tonight, so he's available to answer any questions. Really, the approach to the landscape was to, one, there's a lot of tree mitigation, there's a lot of new trees being planted, but it's a water-efficient landscaping, trying to leave it as natural as possible, taking into consideration wild urban interface restrictions, and really just trying to make this look like a real, make the homes fit within the landscape itself. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I did want to mention one thing that did come up. There is a public, going to be a public access easement over the proposed private road. And it would be an access easement that is in favor of the public for use for bike and pedestrian traffic. So there won't be through traffic going through the project. But there will be active transportation allowed to come if people are walking or biking through that area. And lastly, there's a homeowners association that will be established with this project that will set aside funds and reserves to handle long-term maintenance and any other issues that come up related to landscaping, streets, roads, sidewalks, and whatnot. Thank you.
Who wants to start?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, just a couple of comments, and maybe you can elaborate a little bit on it. But I always worry about private streets when it comes to the maintenance of those, and the width, and the ability for circulation. So maybe, you mentioned the homeowners association, so when you get into common areas, how's that going to work as far as maintenance to make sure that the streets and the, and the vegetation's maintained properly? And, you know, I know how certain homeowner associations work, using the Del Webb as an example. They do a tremendously great job. Maybe you can explain just how that's going to be set up and who's going to be in charge? And is it going to fall back on the city to enforce this if it, if it starts to slide? And is it going to fall back on the city to enforce this if it starts to slide?
So I don't know the exact questions about the city's involvement in terms of enforcement of homeowners associations, but what there will be is a common area parcel over all the streets and common areas that are shared. Then there's also a private open space easement that will be in favor of the homeowners association, who will be responsible for all of the maintenance of that open area that people basically won't be using. And the homeowners association is required to set up a fund. They're required to have their board of directors. They're required to have reserves, similar to what you all spoke about tonight with the landscape and lighting assessment. So the intention behind the homeowners association and the CCNRs is that the city does not have to be involved in maintenance.
Thank you. Councilmember Cruz?
You're on mute.
Yes, thank you. I would like to know what sorts of mitigation plan has come through, given the previous concerns that the council had.
Sir Dobel, I think that would probably be on you.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure what you're, are you referring to the tree mitigation or the landslide repair?
Both.
Okay. So the landslide repair and the tree mitigation were both conditioned to provide plans at the time prior to issuing a building permit. There was also a condition of approval related to the landslide. There were two of them that were put in place that will remain on this project. One is that the landslide repair plans have to be reviewed by the project geotechnical engineer, and then the city will supply a peer review, an independent third-party review of those landslide repair plans, which the developer will pay the cost of. And that's how the landslide mitigation will be addressed. We have not prepared those plans yet. The reports have been written, so we have all of the guidelines, and we know what needs to happen, but those construction drawings have not started. If we were to receive our approval tonight, we would begin the process of designing those construction drawings to repair the landslide. The tree mitigation plan is basically a planting of additional trees to replace the ones that have been removed, and that is shown in the landscape plan that's attached in the packet.
I have one more question, if I may. So can you also indicate if all the plantings that you're going to have and HOA is going to support, is that going to be drought resistant and also in accordance to our weather?
Yes, that's the intention, and I'm happy to have the landscape architect get more specific if you would like to have a more detailed explanation of how the landscaping is going to be managed.
Yes, because we also need to have plants that work on retaining soil, you know, to avoid slides, et cetera.
That's correct. And we also have plants that are going to be filtering and treating stormwater. So there will be a variety of planting. I would like to ask Rob Cox, our landscape architect, to come up and maybe answer that question in a little more detail, if that's all right. Thank you.
So to answer your question concerning the sort of concept behind the landscape is, yeah, there's not a landscape in California that doesn't have to originally comply with Wilo and the state's ordinance about, you know, water use, and it's very prescribed. So yes, this is a drought-tolerant landscape. Is it natural? Is it native? It leans heavily into these type of plant communities and methodologies, conceptually. As far as the, you know, tree mitigation, the tree overlay for the site, the, we have, I have maxed out literally the number of trees that we can mitigate reasonably from the removed trees. This comes up to go specifically into the tree mitigation issues. When you try to develop a site to the full maximum of tree mitigation, especially in a condition like this where you have hillsides, you have fire, you have, you know, you're in the WUII, you're trying to develop a drought-tolerant landscape, you have to be, you go to a design that maxes out the mitigation, and then if there's further mitigation, we have to look at other alternatives as far as. But you can't plant the trees on, necessarily on-site. You can't plant them in the open space. You know, some of these reserved open spaces, it makes no sense to try to mitigate trees in those zones because you do as much damage mitigating the trees as you do having removed them in the first place, because you're going to sensitive habitat with equipment to try to plant trees. So I'd say overall, conceptually, this plan is respecting the sort of hillside native kind of planting scheme to specifically, as far as erosion control, fire mitigation, this leans heavily into a native grass community of planting, as we've seen in the fires, especially like in this situation, a lot of the homes back up into areas that are going to be fire-prone. The sort of dominant plant is going to be irrigated native grass land communities of plants with a select group of, like Manzanita, for instance, the native plantings. But the basis is going to be native grasses from an irrigated standpoint, because from a fire suppression standpoint, that's, is maintainable to as far as a clear space around the area. So I, that's about as much, while going into a construction drawing, that's about as much specifics as I can get into right now. So I hope that answers your question.
Like, thank you, sir.
Thank you. You know, Kevin, you did an excellent job on the wine storage facility on the south side of town. You know, it really, it looks good, and it belongs down there in the industrial center. I've always had concerns, though, about this project.
Yes.
Building 33 homes on a hill that moves really concerns me.
Yeah.
I am glad that this, that these will be private roads, you know, future liability of the city I surely would hate to see. I would just like to talk a little bit about the slides. I know that the planning commission, I believe they approved this with the condition that the 17 slide spots need to be repaired before you can start any construction on homes.
That's correct.
And there's also supposedly going to be a bond that's going to be put into place. I forget what the dollar amount was.
Ten million dollars.
Ten million dollars. And I take it that that's going to be put in place prior to the slide mitigations.
Yes.
Just in case something goes sideways there. But, you know, I just have a problem with 33 homes sitting on top of a hill that slides. Lou Tornato, I'm sure, is going to come up and give his views, as well as a few other folks in the audience, but I just can't get past this, and I'm not going to be able to support it because of that. I know you're going to mitigate it. You know, I don't know how that $10 million bond is going to look 15 years from now. I don't know who's going to be responsible for making sure that it is continued to have the premiums paid. And I know we need homes in Cloverdale. You know, I've had realtors get up on this project and tell us how it's important that we have these 33 homes because Cloverdale is short homes. I agree with them, but it's got to be the right homes, the right fit for the landscapes, and I just don't think this is it.
Yeah, one of the things that the project, when it went through a redesign, was to actually make the homes smaller and more of a move-up home, to also cluster them together, so they weren't just big giant homes spread across the whole landscape. What that really did by clustering was sort of condensed the majority of those homes into the lower area, where there is a couple of landslides in the area that need to be mitigated. But the irony here, and we've looked at this very closely, and we share the same concerns. We've met a lot and discussed a lot how this would be handled. Things that we realized was the landslides and the drainage issues and the erosion from that property right now are a result of some illegal grading activity that occurred 20 years ago. And the irony is that the project itself, because of the size and scale of it, is able to fix a lot of those problems just by doing the improvements to the property to create the subdivision. So when you look at it in that context, that's really what the intent of the project is, not only to build the homes, but also solve those problems, address the landslide, dig them out, put in drainage, completely rebuild the hillside before anything else gets built on top of it. Also to have it reviewed and certified, tested, and inspected all prior to building on it. Those are all assurances that are very important, not only to the developer, but us as consultants as well.
Thank you, Kevin.
You're welcome.
No, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear. It's, Kevin, so this is a private road, and is, the maintenance and upkeep would be, will be covered in the HOA?
Correct.
These, okay, thank you, sorry.
Yes.
All right, I have just a couple of quick questions, and I'm sure they've already been addressed, but I just didn't see it, and it's probably my own fault. The line of sight at the entrance and the speeds that we have there?
Yes, that has been addressed. We, in 2005, when this project was originally conceived, we worked with Caltrans on an encroachment permit. At that time, the intersection throat width was designed. So what will happen is the entrance of the road is not going to be where the existing dirt road comes down now. It's actually going to be moved to the south and the west a little bit. By moving the road there and then shaving the hillside back and putting in a retaining wall, we increased the line of sight to 400 feet in both directions. It also moves that intersection away from the Highway 128 intersection, which is important to Caltrans as well.
My next question is the last property, the 33rd lot. What is the reason for leaving it out at this point?
One is it's a little bit detached from the main road of the project, and it's almost behind another property. So I think the intention is to not make, build a home there yet when they want to keep the construction more isolated to the main part of the property. But they do own the parcel. It is being split off. There has, you know, they have to do something with it from the map standpoint, but they'll have to go through a design review at that time. And the standards might be a little bit different. The type of home might be different than what's currently programmed for the clustered homes.
And that's kind of what I was looking at, is it looks like they're trying to possibly bring this in from the Vista View Drive to enter that lot, which concerns me, having any type of access road. I mean, I get it to have an emergency vehicle or something along those lines, but, I mean, we've all been on that road. I go on that road quite a bit, and it is horrible, and the last thing it needs is more traffic.
Yeah, and I believe that will be something that may have to be dealt with in the future, for sure.
On the map, it shows, I've got to pull the panel, and that's exactly what I'm looking at, I'm sorry. It's like 120 feet from, it looks like, that's all I can see because there's a little dot on it, from the turn on Vista View, so like the very top of Vista View, it looks like it would drop down 120-plus feet to get to where that property line would be, which is where they're wanting to put the gate.
Yeah. The gate was located at the direction of the fire department, and it was placed on the project's property, the strip of land that has a current dirt road now. I think it's city right-of-way. And, you know, I know there were some correspondence about moving the EVA gate to that location closer to Vista View Drive. We're not opposed to that, but it really comes down to whether the city wants to have a gate within their right-of-way.
I would be against making that road anything down a hill, because it's already basically a one-way and a six-point turn for a vehicle at that point.
Yeah, I think the real benefit of the EVA and the access in connection to Vista View Drive is that residents that live on Vista View Drive, if there is an incident, they can go to the north and they'll be able to get out.
Absolutely. EVA, I'm totally accepting. I just don't want to give more access for people to go try to use it as a normal entrance for any reason. I mean, I'm talking Knox box-only kind of thing, or...
Yeah, and the gate, the gate system that was recommended by the fire district is pretty innovative. It's electronic, they can control it from the firehouse. It allows pedestrians and bikes to go through, but doesn't allow cars.
I don't have any other questions here. You already answered my other two, so we're good.
Okay, thank you.
And myself, I'm going to open up to the, unless we're good. Open up to the public now?
Thank you.
Who would like to speak first, anyone? Please come forward.
Luciano Toninato, 299 Sheehan Drive. I lived on that property since 1986. There's not been a slide there, to kind of refute, says we've got to fix it. There has not been a slide on that property until, as you guys see on your packet, they graded a road, which happens to be the one that leads to Lot 33. And two months later, first rain, down she came. You see the article, down K Court, that slide has not been remedied, it's still there, and lost another three last year. That hillside is contingent to the freeway, and if you go east on River Road and look back, you can see all the retaining walls that the freeway undercut did. And that hillside did not slide either, until it was undercut for the freeway. Now, condition number 11 says $10 to $15 million for the destruction of the city. And what I'd like to ask is, is there bond insurance? Do we have to get an insurance company to bond it? Because if I was an insurance agent and I would take a look at that hillside, no way in heck would I bond it. There's just too much evidence of slides all over. Another thing is, this $15 million also taking consideration of possible loss of life. It's happened. Another question that I have is, who's going to take care of the open district? Not the common area, but the place where people can walk and ride bikes and so forth? Because that property is borders mine, and there is five-foot-high grass that goes through my property that needs to be taken care of every year. So I don't know who's going to be responsible for that. Another thing is, if this is an insurance company, do we have any contingency in case they drop the insurance at some point, like they're likely to do about, after the first slide? And/or what about if the homeowners association defaults on payment? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments?
Yes, Mayor and Councilor Beasley. My name is Michael Prince Valley. I live at the top of 255 Vista View, Peak there. And I just have some, kind of some technical questions, and maybe they're to get addressed later. But I, having been a president of an HOA, having been a president or chairperson of a land trust, and just being a soil scientist in general, the mitigation question that I have in terms of the landslides is, we don't, it might be a good idea that this project moves forward, that the city gets involved in sort of a weeds level in terms of making sure that the mitigation, erosion mitigation processes are in, or in order and maintained. I don't know what's going to happen with the water that runs from the system into the city sewers and so on and so forth. I don't know that. But I know with pavement and rooftops, the speed of water coming off that, those surfaces can really, can really cause a problem because the velocities are so high and just so sudden, and maybe overwhelm our system here in the city. I don't know about that. I'm sure they can talk about that. But anyway, getting back to my point with my background in HOAs and so forth, maybe making sure, as has been addressed here, is that the HOA is clearly well-funded and has maybe an expert or city can get involved, making sure that the mitigation plans, again, for erosion are in place and things are being maintained. That might be a pretty good idea. As far as, as I recollect, part of... Um, as far as, as I recollect, part of, and maybe the architect can answer this, part of their mitigation is going to be bioswale. Is that still something as far as erosion control, a bioswale?
We can ask him to address that, sir.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. It's more of a, more of a technical question, because using an example of a special sort of, um, expertise in this, having been involved in many bioswales, they tend to fail unless they have somebody competent watching those. Um, the person, your typical gardener, can't maintain those well. They're really tricky, I've been involved in many of those. And so that's kind of my general comments, I can go on and on and on, but I have 40 seconds left, but let's all wrap it up. But anyway, that's sort of my play on this thing, and, um, I appreciate your time and listen to me babble for a while. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Dan Bradchelini, I live in 123 Great Gables. I own property that borders this project. My, uh, southern boundary and their northern boundary are the same, I guess it's also the city limit. But, the, on, on that side of the hill, it's very steep, and, um, I'm, I'm getting on the record here for erosion control, because anything that happens up there comes on down the hill, enters a creek at the base of the hill and drain high flow, if we ever get rain again, enters the Russian River. So, I don't know how they plan on keeping any rainwater out of, of the drainage that's already there. It's not going to be able to handle any, any more than already comes down the hill. So, and that's my concern, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments? Seeing none here, any hands? Michael? There we go. Seeing no attendees at all, we will bring it back to the dais. Councilman Bagby? Councilmember Cruz, do you have any comments right now?
Paula? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a lot of good points were made. My, my biggest concern gets back to the homeowners' association and what if they do default, if they don't collect adequate funds, or if they fail to perform to the, to an adequate level. I, I don't know, and maybe our staff could address this based on the, uh, you know, is the recourse and, uh, what, what is, is this protecting the city? Because ultimately, if there is a failure, it's going to fall back on the city to be responsive. So, I guess I just need some reassurance. Uh, I, it's nice the HOA, and they're going to fund it, and they're going to do these repairs, and it's all going to be their responsibility, but then the what-if, they do default. So maybe if our staff could jump in, or our city attorney, to just kind of reassure us that that is, that there's a plan for them.
Mayor, councilmember, I'm, I'm happy to start on that question, I think, uh, part of the answer is, is a, is a legal answer. Um, I, I think what's before you tonight and what, what staff is requesting that if you, uh, are inclined to approve the precise development plan this evening is to adopt the resolution with the conditions of approval. The conditions of approval are the tools that the city uses to, you know, enforce the requirements that have been approved by the planning commission and, and the council, uh, and would give us the, the guidance that we would use to, uh, a, 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 address the project as it, it moves forward. Likewise, um, it, we, we also would rely upon, uh, current resolutions and ordinances approved by council or municipal code, particularly as it pertains to, for, for instance, uh, code enforcement. If, if, uh, the, the public, or, excuse me, the private street was, say, in such disrepair that it, it created a nuisance, we, we could pursue addressing that nuisance through our code enforcement process. So that, that would be kind of the traditional tools that we would use, uh, to, you know, address concerns if, you know, around, uh, typical issues of, of, uh, say poorly main, maintained vegetation, or roads that become in disrepair, uh, or, or even buildings or structures that may, may become in disrepair. Uh, likewise, we, we would also use code enforcement for things such as drainage. And there are a number of, uh, conditions, uh, of approval, uh, not only in the resolution, but in the environmental document that address things like, uh, stormwater runoff and drainage that are also based in state law, uh, so there, there are mechanisms to, to enforce that. Um, the, the kind of issue at hand, I think, is the, uh, consideration of the, um, the, uh, conditions of approval that relate to, uh, funding, uh, a bond, and again, bonds are, the intent is to provide, uh, a backup mechanism should, uh, developer or contractor fail to perform the work that's required. Uh, and in this case, the, uh, condition of approval does, uh, set forth the bond amount, and also that the HOA would be responsible, uh, for, uh, uh, you know, taking that bond and completing that work. I, I think that's where, where we'd have to look at from a legal perspective, what options are available to the city if the HOA did not perform. I believe, again, we, we reflect back on the conditions of approval, if the project wasn't found in, to be in compliance, uh, we, we have recourse in that manner, uh, but it, it also may mean taking appropriate steps against, against the HOA. Uh, I, I do think this, this presents an opportunity, should council desire, uh, to have some sort of backup language in that conditions of approval, if you see fit, to provide, you know, maybe some additional discretion for, for the city. But I'll leave that to our city attorney.
And Mayor, if I may, what the condition doesn't state, the condition right now, and it is condition 28, a bond in a minimum amount of $10 million up to a maximum of $15 million at the city's discretion shall be posted by the developer to the HOA and remain in place for 10 years from the date of the city's acceptance of improvements, so that in the event of a natural disaster such as, such as a landslide, the HOA would have the funds available to make necessary repairs. Um, what that doesn't account for, and I don't know if the conversations have been such as whether the city would be named, kind of like when we have bonds for a subdivision improvement agreement, for example. If the improvements are not done, the city's able to call in the bond. Um, what that condition doesn't say, and it seems to leave out, is kind of the city's ability to call in a bond for any repairs or improvements. Um, I, I don't know if that's meant, uh, in the negotiations, if that's meant to be added there. That would add more security. Um, again, it's only within, it's only been posted 10 years from the date, uh, of the city's acceptance of the improvements. I think that the conditions that were, um, put in in order to kind of give a little more assurances have been the ones related to the, uh, the reports regarding the landslides and the mitigation, um, that all those reports need to be done, I believe in Kevin, you correct me if I'm wrong, but prior to the, the, the building permits being issued. Um, there's a lot of, uh, reports that need to happen. Regarding the CCNRs, city doesn't get involved with CCNRs. Um, I, I have some, have had some jurisdictions that want to have the ability to enforce CCNRs, but it just creates different standards in different locations if they, if they, if the cities get involved in CCNRs. But the city, as the city manager mentioned, does have still the ability to enforce our own code, uh, as far as nuisance code, that we have code enforcement. Um, we usually, again, don't get involved with the CCNRs, but we do require that they're in place. I know condition, uh, number 25, I believe, has, uh, the requirement that CCNRs be established, and this would be a condition of the, of the project itself.
Just to kind of dovetail on the city attorney's comments, um, as to why the city is not named in this particular regard, uh, or in this particular condition. Traditionally, when the city requires bonds for, for improvements, the, they are for public improvements, a, and that means that the city will then use the bond funds to construct or complete or repair those public improvements. In this case, the, uh, slide areas are all located on private property. If in the case the city was responsible for fixing those slides, then we would, we'd become, it, it, we would become the responsible entity, I, I believe. Uh, and so that's kind of, I think, the philosophy behind remaining, keeping it, remaining with the, the HOA, that the HOA, the homeowners, the owners of the property become, are responsible for, uh, undertaking that repair, because again, it would be, it would be private property. So it's, uh, a little bit different in the sense that, uh, we're not named because i, i, if we were, it would become a, it could potentially become a situation where, uh, the city, a public entity, is in, in a sense, responsible for, uh, addressing private property. So I think that's the philosophy behind why the condition is written. Um, now, it doesn't mean that there aren't some other mechanisms there to kind of ensure that there is, uh, an authority, uh, that could undertake the, the improvements should, should for some reason there, uh, not be, uh, an HOA there available to make the necessary repairs.
Just if I could, may, Mr. Mayor, just a follow-up question. So, I, I recognize when we use our code enforcement process, we will recoup or attempt to recoup our costs. Now, how would that work if it's in a common area that the HOA, homeowners' association is accountable for? How would that work? Maybe the city attorney can explain that, because it's not a property owner, it's more of a subdivision.
We would still be looking at who the property owner, owners are, uh, on record for the property, we'd still be citing, um, because there's still maintenance responsibilities. So if a public nuisance exists, um, just like we do right now, just like the item we had before us today, where we had to recoup costs, where we had to go in, where we had to cite, we always, on code enforcement, you look for in, in the tax roll, who is the property owner? And those folks would be getting, in this case, a lot of times it would be the HOA under, under the name of the HOA, but we'd be citing or going after, um, the, the property owners, potentially even going and doing abatements like we had today for the recovery of costs.
Thank you, that answers it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, not to belabor this, but, um, you know, a few years back, Kevin, I think, uh, you and both David, uh, were with the city when we had a performance bond, a few years to pay. And, uh, I think that wound up, I don't think we ever recouped anything from them. Um, but with that being said, Jose, what concerns me, as you said, a natural disaster. I, I'm also looking at, um, a non-completion of work, I guess. If, if the company, development company gets up there and they stop moving dirt around and they do one slide, and all of a sudden they say, oops, this is a heck of a lot worse than we thought, and they want to walk, walk away, and we're stuck with maybe a, a seethrough house up there and some roads being, being paved, would we be able to cash in on that, uh, performance bond?
Not on that bond, that bond, as the condition is written, that bond's not, uh, intended. Now, if there were public improvements, if there are public improvements, as mentioned, we would have a subdivision improvement agreement, for example. On those public improvements, just like we've, we've looked in the past where the subdivision doesn't get finished, but there is a road, there's water, there's something, there's, there's the pipeline, um, that got bonded, that's, those are the ones that we would be calling in bonds for.
So what happens if the developer just walks away and leaves us with a, and I'm not saying you're going to do this, Kevin, but, um, uh, what happens if they just walk away and leave us with a big mess? How do we recoup that? Because we surely don't want the, the hillside.
It would definitely depend what's, what's, I mean, we've had developments walk away, and we're looking at definitely not having public nuisances in certain properties, where we'd be going potentially even filing a civil action, um, if there was left a public nuisance, a safety issue, that the property owner, the owner of the property is not, um, is not, uh, attending to or is not fixing. We'd probably be looking at potentially even initiation of litigation, but if it's a, if it's a safety concern, a lot of times we've had, um, in different jurisdictions, having to go in and do even summary abatement, or creating, or somehow, you know, if it's a landslide or whatever it is, it's depending on what option it is, but we'd be looking at civil action most likely, uh, in order to make sure that it's safe.
Thank you. Bagby?
Yeah, I've actually, um, was fascinated to go back and look at the history of this project. I actually came in at about 2009, when I was on the planning commission, when we, um, heard some of the, um, second wave of, um, proposals for this property. Um, so, th, this is a, a property that I've actually toured, not recently, but I, um, within the last two years when I was on, when I've been on council. And, um, I've had, it's been presented to me on several occasions, including the planning commission and a couple of times here on, on council. As far as the HOA concern, um, I actually am, um, more supportive of, um, HOAs as opposed to the landscape and lighting districts, which we, you know, heard in a better previous item. The light, landscape and lighting districts have really gone out of fashion, and we actually have several HOAs, um, here in Cloverdale, um, the Meadows, Clover Springs, and Solar Park, um, just to, to name a few. So I think we're, that, those are, are pretty successful, I don't have any reason to question the mechanism. I, I think that, and the concern is around, um, the stormwater, um, mitigation and also the slides, which I, I, those are, are genuine concerns. However, um, it's very clear that this project is in compliance with our general plan and our, our, um, our zoning ordinance. It is zoned residential, and it will either be this project or it will be something else. Um, I am of the opinion, um, having heard considerable testimony and, and asked Kevin, um, repeatedly about the slide issue, um, I, I believe that Kevin is telling us the truth. The only way to truly mitigate the slide issues are, um, to develop the property. Um, that is what is going to, um, ultimately solve that problem. I'm also very satisfied with what I'm seeing regarding, um, stormwater. Now, the, the stormwater and the, um, the, the swale solutions, I agree, swales absolutely have to be maintained, but I'm, I'm fairly confident that the HOA management is going to, um, see to that. It's, um, it is something that has to be, um, minded on a regular basis, not a, we don't have a lot of that solution here in Cloverdale, but it, it, I'm hoping that we, we certainly have a lot more. I think the developers here have acted in good faith with staff, with council and the planning commission over many years. Um, they've worked with us and addressed our concerns and addressed the concerns of the neighbors. We also get a win-win in that it will permanently preserve several acres of open space, which is a priority in our, our general plan, to preserve our, our view shed. Um, again, this property is, is owned residential, and, um, it's, it's, it's going to be developed at some point. Not only do we need more homes for residents, but we also, as a city, need to expand our tax base. Um, and this is a, a good opportunity for, um, some beautiful, um, additional homes, um, that'll be great homes for, um, for our residents. I also particularly like the fact that it is extremely varied, um, which is more of an organic, um, component that you'd see in, in older neighborhoods, where you don't just have, everybody has two and three-bedroom homes, you have homes of multiple sizes and multiple, multiple footprints. I think that they've done a, a really good job of fitting into, um, the landscape. But, but most importantly, you know, th, this project is in keeping with the general plan and, um, is, um, is, is in compliance with our, with our zoning. I feel that you have a responsibility, um, on council to, um, keep your promises, and zoning is a, is a promise to property owners. So, with that, I'm, I'm hoping we'll be able to support this project this evening.
Councilmember Cruz?
No comments.
Mr. Dobell, I have just a couple of quick questions for you, and it's mainly based around, you know, the, the pushback that we get a little bit, the neighbors that are concerned, and they're ve, very valid concerns.
Absolutely, yeah.
A very steep hillside that leads right into their backyard, and with the history of the hill, they're very nervous, and I, I totally understand. Can you explain the stormwater and the drainage easements and how you're going to mitigate that, where a fence line of someone's property goes, and it's a steep hillside straight down into Mr. Tononato's backyard? What, what are you doing there to control the water and, and keep this from being-
Yeah, so there's, there's two areas of stormwater we, we pay attention to. The, the smaller, more frequent storms, which carry lots of pollutants, and they also cause- erosion. Those smaller, more frequent storms are being dealt with, which will take, basically slowing the water down a little bit, not just pushing it out to the storm drain pipe and shooting it off-site. And there will be a series of rain gardens, there will be bioretention areas on the side of, sides of the road, so the landscape will actually be depressed, it won't be mounded up, so water can actually come in there and just filter itself out. When you get above a two-year storm and you get into those larger storm events where it's really raining hard and people are, you know, cleaning out their drains, this project proposes to not increase the amount of runoff through a process of detaining the water. So there'll be a series of underground sealed storm drain pipes, they're basically oversized. They'll hold the water and let it out over a longer period of time, and what that will do is will reduce the amount of peak flow at those critical outlets that are downstream. Both of those are conditions of approval within the project. There are two conditions of approval from Public Works. One is that we use the City of Santa Rosa's low-impact development design guidelines. Those require treatment and quantity control for those more frequent storms. They also require a maintenance agreement, that each one of those BMPs be at best management practices or rain gardens, they be identified, identified on the final map. They also have to be inspected every year, and a report has to be issued for the, to the city. The state enforces the city through your stormwater permit, and the state can go to the city and say, hey, give me all the reports from all the developments that did low-impact development in the last five years, and the city has to produce those reports. So those reports will have to come to the city every year. They require a qualified person to go out and inspect and prescribe corrective maintenance when it's necessary. That's a cost that the homeowners association will have to carry. So the other condition of approval from Public Works is that they basically limit the post-development runoff to pre-development conditions, and that's the larger storms that I was speaking of before.
Thank you. So in your presentation, and great answer, I appreciate that. That's exactly what I was hoping to hear. We've worked on a lot of projects together, and you, you've done a good job with this so far, with me, and I love it.
Thanks.
So in your presentation, one of the slides was a CCNR for the private open space easement. It says, "The association shall be responsible for maintaining all lands within the easement in order to comply with Cloverhill City Fire Code." What about this issue?
Uh, the-
Water mitigation on those open space areas?
Um, so-
Is there anything that we can add to this that will help other, other people, you know, in the bottom of the hill?
Yeah.
We're covered, because if this hill starts to slide from John Doe's fence line through that easement, and there's nothing in our CCNRs that cover it?
Um, there, there will be. So through your, through the permits that are issued by the city, the low-impact development standards will require that all of the stormwater control features, they be identified, they actually have a unique identification, they have a number, they're recorded on the final map, they're tied to that maintenance agreement, and they're tied to showing, demonstrating that the homeowners association has set aside funding, a line item in their budget for handling those situations. With, as, with respect to the open space easement, there was a comment about maybe the public being in that area. It's actually a private open space easement, will not be open to the public, there will not be, you know, hiking trails or anything like that for the public to use. The only area that public access is going to be allowed is for bike and pedestrian within the proposed new street, which is Shannon Drive.
Yeah, my only last qu- is concern is just the, the emergency vehicle access, not, not letting people go down the hill into the development, keeping them, so they, I don't want more traffic on this to be at this point.
Yeah, yeah, the road can handle it. Vista View Drive is not, you don't want to put more cars in there right now, it's not necessary. So we, we understand that, and I know that the developer understands that, and the developer's been very willing to cooperate and work with the city. We would even go as, I mean, whatever we prepare, whether it's CCNRs or the homeowners association budgets, we're happy to share all of that with the city, so that you have extra assurance. I, I will tell you that one of the things that's important for us all to recognize, because we sometimes get, we get, we get, we dive into the issues, right? We're following the city's process, which has sort of got varying steps in it, for, for good reason. So when we were before you in 2018, and this subdivision was approved by the city council, it, it was entitled to move forward, but the precise development plan, which is what we're reviewing tonight, wasn't prepared at that time. The reason that's done is so that there's incremental check-ins at each step of the way, so the council has the opportunity to condition the project. There's one more layer to this. If you approve the project tonight with the conditions of approval, it's the city staff's responsibility to make sure all of those conditions of approval are met before anything can get approved and permits can be issued. Lastly, there will be most likely a bond for the improvements. What happens in a subdivision, whether it's private road or public road, is you cannot com- you cannot record the final map, which is the actual legal document that splits the parcels, until all of the improvements are constructed. And in most cases, developers do not want to do all of the improvements, they want a bond for them. But that's the city's surety that those improvements will get constructed before lots start being sold and go on the market. One other layer with the homeowners association is that the State Department of Real Estate has a lot to say to developers about homeowners associations and those documents, because it's a consumer affairs, it's a consumer protection policy as well. So all of these things that are in place, all of these steps that we're following, including with the State Department of Real Estate, are put there so that the buyer is one, understands that these conditions exist. They also understand that there's costs, they also understand that they have to join the HOA if they want to buy one of those parcels. All of those things are kind of put in place to protect the buyer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And Mayor, if I may, I was, I was looking through the conditions of approval now, because I remember that conversation happening, and although the city normally doesn't get involved with, with CCNRs, I was looking through the conditions, because I remember this came up, it's come up quite a bit, and I know, and I looked, I found the condition. Condition 25 actually states that CCNRs shall include a provision permitting the city to enforce the CCNRs at the HOA's cost. So normally, the city does not get involved with CCNRs, but I did remember that conversation happening, so I looked through the conditions, and that was included for this project, the specific project, given the concerns.
Thank you, Jose. David, did you have some-
Mayor, members of council, if I can, it, it, pose, pose maybe a question for the developer and see if council might have an appetite for this consideration, is, you know, we, we've seen more and more interest in utilizing and capturing rainwater from roofs. Rain barrels in particular have become very popular. It can also serve as a mechanism to kind of capture, capture runoff and, and, and be able to reuse. I guess it's a question for maybe Kevin or the, or the architect, whether, you know, the site development plans for the units could be, you know, whether it's modified or shown to incorporate rain barrels as a way to, one, capture some of the rainwater, because that's always a consideration, but also to be able to utilize that for, for onsite irrigation purposes, as a way to offset future potable uses from the, from the development.
Um, if, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I can answer that. So rain barrels or cisterns are, are prescribed within the low-impact development guidelines, they are allowed to be used. They're typically going to be something that the homeowner has to maintain, because you don't want standing water sitting in them, so they do have to be emptied out. But we're not opposed to anything like that, that, that may, may help. There's also been discussion about, you know, a gray water system to help offset water use for landscape. Those are all things that are available to us. The only issue with gray water is that Cloverdale currently doesn't have the, the waste discharge permits to allow gray water to be implemented into projects. Maybe at some time it does. We're open to having a condition that allows future property owners to do gray water systems if they become allowed. Those are all tools that we can put in the toolbox to assist with that.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Councilmember Cruz, any more questions?
Okay. Are we supposed to set the bond amount now, since it says 10 to 15? Are we supposed to do anything with that number, Jose?
And that just provides the flexibility to go to 15 million. I think that the council can definitely provide direction as far as whether it's 10 or 15, it is up to the city. So that definitely could be done now, if the council wanted to. It is up to, at the discretion, let me just pull up the, the language, it does say at city's discretion.
Sorry, how was the number, or how was that arrived at? That, on advice from our, our city engineer, and it, because if the number is coming from west yost, I'm inclined to believe it's a pretty good estimate.
I, I think I'd want to defer to the, the development team, but there, there's, there's quite a bit of geotechnical evaluation work that was done, and in my recollection, it was that that was tied to some of the least preliminary engineering costs associated with the, with the slide repair. And, and my thought would be, if council was inclined to update it, is maybe rather than setting a prescriptive amount, or specific amount, set a amount, set a minimum amount, but tie it to a, a future set of engineered plans with, with engineered cost estimates for that repair, so that there's a direct connection between the bond amount and the cost of the repair as identified by a certified engineering geologist.
Yeah, I'd love, I'm waiting.
Okay, I'm, I'm happy to, yeah, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, sorry, Kev.
Yeah, no problem. So the Thompson Development is a, they're, they are a subsidiary of a larger, very large construction company in the Bay Area. They do big projects, schools, hospitals, bridges, you know, public works projects. They estimated the cost to repair the landslides at $5 million. When we were before the council previously, when the project was entitled, we had the conversation and we provided that information to the staff, and it was the council that decided to, to push it to $10 million, because they felt like $5 million wasn't enough, even though that was the cost to construct and repair the landslide. I've talked to Mr. Thompson, he's, he's agreeable to the condition, he's agreeable to open to talking about refining the number. Those are all options that are available. It's really at the council's pleasure what you guys would like to do for the bond, and we're not seeing any, any resistance to that from, from the client.
Thank you. I'm just trying, I just keep reading, trying to make sure I'm not missing something here. And the, the date of the, the 10 years is from the city acceptance of improvements? Does that mean tonight, or does that mean when they're completed, done?
It's correct. Once the roads are in, the power, the water.
Just wanted to make sure that was clear. Anything else?
Yeah, I'm just concerned, I, I just, I don't want to assign an arbitrary number. So Kevin, could you clarify, was that, the $5 million estimate, was that based on the 2019 or 2018 numbers? Do you see where I'm going?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't want to, I don't want to go crazy and, and assign an arbitrary number, but I want to make sure that that estimate is still-
Yeah, I, I think the intention, you probably want to, you'd probably have to look at the administrative record, because it was a conversation the council had. The $5 million was a, actually contractor's estimate to repair the slides. They're basically digging out the hillside and putting it all back, with better soil and compacting it and replanting it, putting in drainage. All of that added up to about $5 million. I think the extra $5 million was, well, what happens over time? Time value, money, maybe it's going to cost more over time. I think that was the, the, sort of the intent of the conversation the council had back in 2018.
I have a question, if I may, please.
Please, go ahead, Councilmember Cruz.
Um, so I need to have something clear in terms of the timeline. When is the geotechnical report submitted? Is that prior to construction, after improvements? I, I need to have a better understanding of the timelines.
Uh, it was submitted to the city in 2017. It's part of the environmental document that was approved by the council in 2018.
And how long does that report last? I mean, how long is it valid?
That, that report will have to be updated prior to completing the construction drawings, which would be the next step in the process.
Okay, so there's the answer.
That, the report gets updated and it gets peer reviewed by a geotechnical engineer that the city chooses, an independent third party.
Okay.
That's a, that's a condition of approval. I don't know the exact number of that condition, but that's in the, in the documents.
Thank you. Okay, anything else?
I'd like to, actually, let me just check with the city manager, were there any clear amendments that you heard to the resolution?
I, I did not recall council directing staff to make any specific amendments.
And then just a question, so, because the, we're, the item before us is the, is the precise plan this evening, and so we will have a subsequent updated geotechnical evaluation, where there may be a, a different estimate on the remediation, and would we have time to, at that time, would be, we'd be able to adjust the bond amount that we are asking for?
I, I think the condition that's written, that referenced by our city attorney, i- is prescriptive with respect to the amount. If you wanted to modify that language to provide for some flexibility around current cost estimates, I think, I think that's certainly within your purview tonight to do that, because part of what council, or staff is asking council to do is to adopt a resolution that would approve the condition, reapprove of, you know, what were previous conditions of approval with some new ones reflecting the precise development plan. So you very well could update that condition to ensure that it, it maintains, that the requirement regarding the dollar amount is, you know, tracks inflation, tracks current costs for performing the slide mitigation work called for in the, in the geotechnical investigation study.
I just, I just want to make sure that we're very careful about that application, because we already doubled what the estimate was, but I am also very cognizant of the fact that we, we may get an updated number, based on materials and inflation. So with, with that, I would offer the resolution of the City of Cloverdale, city council approving a precise development plan and design review for construction of a 33 detached single home residences in the 42.62 acre Vista Oak subdivision project located at the north end of Vista View Drive and North Cloverhill Boulevard, APN 116-050-001, 116-060-012-025-027-033-063-067, and 001-350-005 and-038, with the added caveat that we may revisit the bond amount based on updated geotechnical reports.
I'll second that.
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
No.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
No.
Mayor Lands?
Aye.
Mayor, members of council, let the record reflect that the resolution was approved by council on a vote of three to two.
If you guys don't mind, we're going to take a five-minute break, 8:16, and then we're going to bring the chamber up next. Yes.
Yes.
We have the phone numbers, like, so it really is a wonderful thing.
And if people aren't home, we try to leave the bag either on a doorknob or someplace that's not going to be affected by the weather. And it's been well received. Through May, I think we did 175 bags, which was about a 23% increase over the year before. And that's predicated on new home sales and all of that. But the bags are always available. We can put one together in a flash. So we, there's a letter from moi that lists some of the annual events that happen, not necessarily the dates, but what time of year they occur. We put in license plate covers, coasters, all kinds of things that kind of hopefully people will feel welcome. That's enough about the welcome bags. Michael, thank you. So we also use social media. Some of us here use it better than others. Usually I ask Savannah, I say Savannah, can you? And it's already done. So she's my social media, our social media maven. I'm, I get there, but it's, it's more circuitous. So we do 365 days of Experience Cloverdale, where we focus on our people, our landscapes, events, and all kinds of things. We're, we do that almost every day. And then we also, and people respond and they do comments and all of that. So that's a good way that we can establish another way of communicating with businesses and with residents. And we, we do get a lot of comments, don't we? Yeah. Next slide, please. We, a year ago May, started shop and support Local Cloverdale, which is a, a social media site for Chamber members. And all they need to do is to send us a photo and we will post it. And we also do advertising that supports either businesses, restaurants, services on a regular basis. And if, if people don't send us things, we go and troll and get them from their websites and their social media sites. So.
It also didn't trigger the Sonoma.
Oh, yeah. That was a while ago, but Sonoma Magazine came to Cloverdale as a result of
This page.
This page, because it's really lovely. If you haven't gone there, it doesn't have a lot of words, but it has a lot of beauty and a lot of good food. We really do food well.
A lot of pretty pictures.
Mm-hmm. So if you haven't been, check it out. These are just a couple of events that we put the flyers up for. A lot of work goes into every single one of them. We have a great group of volunteers that we tap. They see my caller ID and they go, oh, is it that time of year? But we can't do it by ourselves. So, so we're looking forward to the first Happy Birthday Cloverdale. It's Cloverdale's 150th birthday in 2022. And we also are celebrating the birthday of our country. So we're doing a parade, which we've never done. Think we, I initially said we probably bit off more than we could chew, but we're chewing. We're chewing. And with the help of a lot of people and organizations and our police chief and his staff and other people, it's going to be fabulous. We've gotten a number of entries. Kids.
Yeah, we initially said it was going to be a small parade. I said 10, 10 people, 10 things. And it is at 25 groups. So it.
Twenty-six, I haven't told you yet.
And I still have people emailing me to send in their parade forms. So it is going to be a big parade. I, I anticipate something close to the Citrus Fair as far as what it's going to look like. So it's really exciting.
It's going to be super sweet. It's going to start at 9:00 AM, which will, is earlier than the Citrus Fair parade. But then it ends at the Citrus Fair. And then there's a whole day of family-friendly fun stuff going on there. Things like hula hoop contests, pie eating contests, lemonade, people selling lemonade, root beer floats, music, food. It should be a lot of fun for fam, for families in our community. Because you, 4th of July is really usually very quiet until the fireworks happen in the evening. So we're hoping to really bring people downtown, bring people, bring neighbors and friends and businesses that are closed downtown. Should be a ton of fun. Our car show's coming up, September 10th. We have about 50 entries now, 45, which is good, great. And also, we've encouraged the Alexander Valley Film Group to do a, a drive-in movie at the airport. So we're in progress. I, it is going to be Greece, right?
It is going to be Greece. And thank you, David, for all your help with that. I know tested. The city was super helpful in making sure the Citrus Fair wasn't available. So when we were doing a car-type show.
We did a, we did a car show pop-up with David's help, with Kevin's help, with everybody's help, and Michael Morrissey's help. Car Club contacted us. We didn't even a club. They were just in a, like in a, sort of a association of people that like cars and like to drive cars. They did, we had about 200 cars at the airport on a Saturday morning, and then they took off on a rally, went through town and came back later through town. And they loved it. The airport was a great venue for that. So, love that. More, more of that kind of stuff. Because we don't, we don't stand on ceremony. We, if we can do it, we get it done. And if not, we pretty much are, we kind of grumble in the attempt. Okay. So, and then our Winter Festival, which this year we were approached and we reached, we reached, actually, we reached out to La Familia Sana. And I think we're going to try to do a Posada in, in addition to, which is a parade, in addition to the Winter Festival. We worked, it was fabulous last year. And, and we know that it's weather-dependent. You know, if it's pouring down rain, bring your bumber chutes, but you're going to get wet and you're going to get cold. But it was fabulous last year. So hopefully we'll, more of the same. Next slide, please. And these are just a couple of events that happened downtown. And there's, there was a pop-up that was done on Memorial Weekend that isn't even featured here. But there's a summer sidewalk sale that all businesses can participate in to whatever degree they want. And, and we also, sorry, we also did, we actually had a downtown trick-or-treating deal. That was
A lot of fun.
It's adorable. Yeah. And I think the parents and the grandparents and guardians and that kind of thing, they love it because it happens early enough in the day that they can do stuff with their kids later, or bring them home, keep them off the streets. It's a ton of fun. Next slide, please. More accomplishments. You know, we, we try to, we try to be, participate in all of the important initiatives, Resilient Cloverdale, and under that Resilient Cloverdale, the Clover Ready Initiative, where we work hard to figure out the best way of helping to prepare our residents and businesses and visitors and employees, how to deal with evacuation should that happen. We did a really cute three-minute video, embracing life in a small town. And it's on our website. And three minutes is kind of a long time, but it's super cute. You, there are people here that are, are on that video. I think Mr. Walter might be. We just went back to the past and the current and look forward to the future with that. So we do a state-of-the-city brunch in conjunction with the city. It says at the Trading Post, we've done it twice there, but it's a perfect venue for that. We did upgrade our website to be ADA compliant. And we put, one of the things that was important to me when I first took this job was having a place for people that need people, employees, to be able to have them post those and have people that are looking for work have an easy place to access to see what might be available in Cloverdale. So we, that was just launched a little bit ago, and it's still pretty new, but it's super easy. And I think the last page in this, in this presentation talks, or maybe it's in your actual scope of work document. But it's, it's really easy. It's right off our website. And also, it is a, we have the directions on how to post any kind of an event. You can do that. We'll get notification. We approve it. And it's, there's a place for people to check what's going on. It took a while for people to wake up from COVID, and I think we're still dealing with aspects of that. But it's, there's a lot going on. Everybody woke up at the same time. Next slide, please. Oh, that might be it. In, in your actual packet, which was attached to the, which was attached to your, your agenda, there's a, a little one-piece how, how-tos. And that's how to post a, a calendar event, and that's how to post a, a job if you have, offer, if you need to have people working for you. Because everybody, that seems to be the, the hue and cry. You don't need, it's okay. It's in there. It's like the last page, but it's all good. So do you have any questions or any concerns or any suggestions?
Let's go around the room. Councilmember Bagby?
Nina, it's been a while since I took a look at the website, so I just brought it up. And it really is beautiful.
Yeah.
Really great. And so I'm very glad to see that you did the ADA plugin as well, because it's just more and more important for the community. But
And, yeah, it is.
I think, I, I, I just appreciate everything that you and Savannah do. I mean, you do it with so much love and so much inclusion. You're just, you know, so appreciated. I know that herding cats is not always easy, but you guys do it with a lot of grace.
We do, huh? We do with a smile.
You do it with a smile. And we just really appreciate you being our, our goodwill ambassadors to the, to the community. And I think one of the hardest things is writing your own accomplishments. Like, you can write about somebody else. It's really hard to, and I'm sure you left a ton of stuff.
I didn't want to totally just
Well, and you did that with a leaky roof and all kinds of, you know, issues in your own office. So I just think you've done a really wonderful job this past year. And I just, I look forward to what you're going to do next year. Because, yeah, I think it's, hopefully, fingers crossed, we're, we're coming out of this. And people are really hungry for community, community engagement, knowing their neighbors, you know, going out and, and enjoying events that we haven't been able to do for a long time. So it's going to be even, I just, I don't want to say it's going to be more important and more work, but it's, you're going to have more opportunities. Let's put it that way.
That's right. More opportunities, some of which we cannot even envision at this point.
And I, so I look forward to seeing how you, you solve for that. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Cruz.
Yes, I want to say thank you to Nina and Savannah. I really appreciate the effort that you have put into working on inclusion and cultural sensitivity. I, I hope this continues. And I'm always here to support the Chamber in any way that I can. So thank you very much.
As you do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to, again, like my fellow councilmembers, thank the Chamber for all your hard work. It's a joy to work with you. I know you do a lot with very little staff, just like our city staff does. It's just a lot more work than you have staff. But there's two things I just want to, just make a suggestion, if I could. I'd like to make sure that we continue with that vacant building process. We started it, and I know it's kind of been, it's been set back for a while. We need to revisit that. So I'd like to maybe see us continue to put some energy into that, especially in the downtown core. And the second thing is, you know, with the loss of a local newspaper, it's made it really hard to communicate to the community about things such as restaurants closing. And recently, we had the, you know, Hamburger Ranch, the Railroad Station, La Hacienda, all closed for quite a long time. And some of them are still closed. Some have reopened. But maybe it would be good, not just with restaurants, but just different businesses, if there was a mechanism where they can communicate with you in advance and you had a spreadsheet on the, on your website that would kind of alert the community that, you know, in this case, the Railroad Station and the Hamburger Ranch was closed for six weeks, both of them, because they were out of, out of country.
They were in Nepal.
Yeah, for a wedding. But people were like, are they closed or good? What's going on? And I heard a lot of that. And it'd be good, you know, in the way of communications to the people in, in behalf of the business, so people know they are coming back and they'll be reopened. So if there's a way to kind of capture that in advance and put something together where it's a, go to website where you could actually say, okay, this is what's going on. This is the plan. So that, that would be really helpful.
Social media might be a way to help that, too. You know, I mean, we do respond to comments and that kind of thing, but that's not, not everybody sees it at the same time. That's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, thank, thank you for all you do. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, just to piggyback, hello there, just to piggyback on what Councilmember Bagby said, you know, how, how you just jump in and do things on your own. I think that's fantastic. But the thing that she left out that I'm going to add is you make it look so easy. You know, everything you do, it's, it's, you, you put it together effortlessly. And I, I really do appreciate it. So thank you, ladies.
One, I think that's due to seeing this friction and disconnect that these two have together.
Yeah, it's really bad.
Just watching you two here interact, the way you interact with everybody and with each other is, it shows you why we're successful and why you're successful. And we are because of you. So thank you for everything you do.
The yin and the yang, right?
Yeah.
It's like you're stuck, Savannah.
Thank you very much.
For a public comment. Oh, go ahead, Councilmember Cruz.
Yeah. So may I ask, is Cloverdale Connect a part of your expenses? I don't
Yes.
Everything is kind of like this?
We advertise, we advertise in Cloverdale Connect. It's a great way, and I think it's a cost-effective way of reaching people, whether we're doing it under the Clover Ready umbrella or the Cloverdale Chamber of Commerce Shop Local umbrella. It's a great way to reach people.
Yeah, I, I'm just saying, because of the concerns that Councilmember Paula had, I think it could just be resolved by using that, because that's one of the objectives of, for all of the city and for the Chamber, to continue to connect with everyone.
Councilmember Cruz, that's a great idea. Get permission from the businesses to do some kind of a statement when we know that that's going on. That's a great idea.
We did that during COVID, so maybe that's something we can revisit, that format.
Okay, thank you. Open to the public. Nobody in the public and nobody in our attendees. We'll bring it back to the dais.
Thankfully, not standing room.
Mayor, I'd like to introduce City of Cloverdale Resolution of the City Council. City of Cloverdale approving the professional service agreement between the Cloverdale Chamber of Commerce and the City of Cloverdale for economic development and promotional services during fiscal year 2022-23 and 2023-24 in the amount of $150,000 and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement.
Second.
Councilmember Bagby was first on that one. Paula first, Bagby second.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye.
Look forward to the 4th of July festivities.
Thank you. It'll be fun.
Thanks for waiting through the meeting.
Actually, it was really interesting.
Thank you, guys.
G1, Cloverdale Police Department Military Equipment Use Policy 708.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council. Before you tonight is a staff report requesting council adopt an uncodified ordinance to approve the military equipment use policy pursuant to Assembly Bill 481. The adoption of this ordinance is necessary to comply with the new legislation regarding the approval of funding, acquisition, and use of equipment used by law enforcement. If you recall, during the March 23rd council meeting, I brought forth this military use, equipment use policy for your review and discussion. It was during that meeting I provided a synopsis of the bill, as well as advised that the police department does possess and use certain military equipment defined in the bill. At that time, council was requested to authorize staff to bring, bring an item back for a public hearing. Council approved the request by unanimous vote. For the department to continue using military, qualifying military equipment, this bill requires that the council is the governing body for the City of Cloverdale to approve the military equipment use policy through an adoption of an ordinance. Included in your packet tonight is the military equipment use policy, our lexible department policy on military equipment, as well as the ordinance. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Hopefully, everybody remembers when we went through there. It was quite complex. So if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Councilmember Cruz, would you like to start tonight?
No.
I don't have any questions. I'm just amazed at what they've identified as military equipment under the law. It's amazing. It's just, but with that said, it is
That's what we have to do.
It is what it is.
Yeah, exactly.
Public comment?
Sorry.
Open to the public and close it to the public and back to the dais.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer the ordinance by, by the only
You know what? I'm going to just let the vice mayor take it.
In, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale adopting the Cloverdale Police Department Military Equipment Use Policy 708.
Second.
We have a first by Vice Mayor, second by Councilmember Bagby.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye.
Four to one with. Okay, moving on to H Subcommittee Reports. Finance, Admin, and Police.
Mr. Mayor, our meeting was canceled due to the holiday, July the 4th. So our next meeting would be August the 1st at 1:30.
Sir? Planning and Sustainability?
Yeah, we actually met this week on the 21st, and we had a great presentation from the Regional Climate Protection Association on their climate mobilization policies. And they are just sort of getting out and will be giving presentations over probably the next two years. And hopefully, well, Nina and Savannah are gone, hopefully to the Chamber and other groups. And it's, it's actually developing mobilization and plans to, in keeping with the climate emergency declaration that the City of Cloverdale and the county and the other, and actually, all nine cities in Sonoma County have, have made. So it'll be, I think it'll be a work in progress. And hopefully, we'll have a chance to have them come and present before the entire council at some point. And then when's our next meeting, Kevin? It's, sorry to put you on the spot there. Our next meeting is in August. And it's usually the Tuesday before, I know, but I'm on the, I'm on my notes is the problem. When do we have that? It's on, it's usually the Tuesday before the council meeting.
August 19th.
August 19th. Good save, David. Thank you.
Public Works and Facilities?
Mr. Mayor, we're going to be gathering on June the 28th at 2:00 PM.
It's actually 1:30, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Uh, 1:30. Thank you.
That's a typo. 1:30.
Joint City and Fire District?
No meetings. And there is talk about combining that one with another, as they haven't met in years. Joint City and School District?
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request that we revisit the time this meeting makes place with the Zoom capabilities as well as call-in capabilities. You know, our staff does typically work if they're off at 5:00. And I'd like to change this and make it a 1:30 meeting straight across. And I think if that runs into a problem, we could revisit it. But I think with Zoom and phone in those that can't personally be there, they certainly have the ability to communicate. So.
And the history behind that was set up so that we could get more public comments and a different realm of the public, depending on who was working and who wasn't at that time. And we get less people at the later meeting, which we would expect it to be the opposite. So I completely agree with you. I think that we switch all those meetings just to the 1:30 from here on out. And if there's an issue, we can revisit.
Unless there's a conflict at some point with the job schedule, but that, although the 1:30 has always worked for me. So, at least for now.
Is that good with you, David? You got that? Thank you, guys. The Homeless Community Advisory Group. We met recently. And about a year and a half ago, we started a homeless coalition. It was a group of, or is a group of all of our medical, mental health, law enforcement, fire, city council, everybody to get together as a little ad hoc to focus on individuals in Cloverdale. And thanks to hard work by our police chief, along with the county and the housing people and the mental health departments, we were told at our last meeting, Cloverdale is basically, in city limits, at a functional zero for homeless. We have housed or found housing for just about every single person that we can at this point. And they're still working diligently, obviously, because there's people outside of our limits. But as of right now, they called it a basic functional zero. So we, as a group, have worked hard, but the coalition has really focused in and honed in on each individual for their needs. And I can't thank them enough to show that this is what the state needs to be focusing on and how to make things work. And you guys did it in a year and a half. So it makes a difference with what you do. And so I thank you guys for that. Also, vegetation management along the river, through the River Park and over south to Alcoast has started. I think that's probably the reasons we're starting to see the fires popping up in the past day and a half, is they're being given opportunities to move along or get services through the county. Most people, as we know, along our river will completely deny. And then they, as they did last year, they started lighting the riverbed on fire. We've had a couple fires in the past 24 hours, and it's looking like that's the direction it's going. However, people like our own Public Works crew have gone through and have been mowing big areas to knock down the, the threat of, of fire blowing through. And now we have funding to cover the entire River Park, and it started now. And I, as we were sitting here, I received the email from the biologist, and only one nest he's worried about at this point, which was very surprising. So it looks like all the work that we need is going to get done. Our next meeting is, is it really July 12? Did we change that? July 12th at 5:00 is the next listed meeting. 1:30. 1:30 on that. That's changed. Okay. Aye, council reports. Anything that's not already written?
Submitted line and writing.
That's okay. Yeah, I did submit my, in writing. I just wanted to expand a little bit. I was trying to make my, the deadline that I, I think I made it to get it into, Michael, but I didn't include a lot of detail. Just the first thing I, that council to be aware of, on the June 15th SMART Board meeting, we, we were able to adopt our annual budget, which is pretty pro forma. But probably one of the more exciting things that happened at the meeting that may not be exciting if you weren't paying attention, but our brand-new freight manager presented our freight contract. And it looks, and so, so SMART has, you know, officially taken over freight on the line and is managing it in-house, at least for now. And their SMART staff is making progress on that. I think that it's very likely that we will be seeing freight come back to our area at some point. So that's pretty exciting. On the 20th, I had my Great Redwood Trail Board Meeting. It must be budget season, because we approved our annual budget. And we got to meet new staff, but it wasn't new staff to us. It was old staff, because it was Louisa from Ag and Open Space, who we've worked on, who we've worked, worked with before. She is now a staffer at Great Redwood Trail. So we have someone who we're familiar with and worked with and a direct connection. So we have someone who we're familiar with and worked with and a direct connection with, with staff on GRT. So that's, and she's a Sonoma County person. So it's always nice to have kind of an inside staffer on, on those kinds of projects. And then also, just to keep you up to date, just today, I had yet another, because ad hoc meetings are supposed to have an end, but they don't really. I had another ad hoc meeting with the Sonoma County mayors and council members where we are making progress and updates to the bylaws, and we're hoping that you will, you'll be, you'll see that sometime this summer or perhaps early fall. And they were long overdue. Bylaw changes, I think the last time it was updated was just early 2000s, something like that. So, yeah, you'll be seeing, you'll be seeing those updates sometime this year.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Informational reports? Legislative reports, letters for support or opposition? City manager report?
Mayor and members of council, a real brief report. I sent a correspondence to the SMART general manager today, Mr. Eddie Cummings, in regards to interest in establishing a location for a possible dog park within the city adjacent to the SMART train, which for reference is the area immediately outside the Public Works Corporation yard. Received very positive response, and I'll be working with Mr. Cummings to see what are possible next steps to, you know, formally establishing that as a city, a city dog park area. So obviously, there are more, more to come on that. And, you know, it was just kind of the start of a discussion on how we might put in place the appropriate mechanisms to utilize that area. I think it's a, it's a great area, a great site because of its proximity to the corp yard with parking, water, electricity, and others, other amenities that can help support that area being utilized for a dog park. But I just wanted to report out that that seems like to be a positive conversation with SMART.
Thank you. David, just a quick question. You say the, is it next to the Blue Building? Or is it on the south side of the transportation depot?
South of the, the train depot. So can, where you exit the, the corp yard, if you look at that property right there. It kind of mapped out a roughly 20,000 square foot area that could, you know, be fenced and support, you know, potential location of dog, a future dog park.
And will maintain it with the mowing of the lawn and all that, right?
I think that those are the details we want to work out, but that's exactly what proposed. It would be city maintained, but, you know, we have to grant, SMART would have to grant us the right to use it.
Before you say anything, if you were planning on it, I got to say thank you, Councilmember Bagby, for making this happen, and to David for pushing it through and making sure it happens swiftly.
Kevin and Raphael identified the site, and it comes under the heading, "It Doesn't Hurt to Ask." That's all I did.
I just want to chime in and say.
So much gets done with that.
Just like to chime in and say thank you, because that's excellent news, excellent news.
I'm going to knock on wood after that, so, or knock on fake wood. It's not done, it's not done yet.
It's a start, it's a start. I'll work hard to make this happen very efficiently, and I appreciate it. City Attorney?
Wow.
All right, status update with water supply?
Anything new?
I just wanted to report that on, on Sunday this week, we approved the participation in the voluntary water sharing agreement. The deadline was Monday. And got the necessary approval within the portal that was offered by the State Water Resources Control Board. So that has been formally approved via the portal in, at the, in support of and at the direction of your, at the council.
Thank you. COVID-19?
Your reports, Mayor.
Future agenda items?
I just want to reiterate, we talked last time, just the presentation on the water rate and how that fits in with the recently approved grant that we received and the ARPA money. I know there's been some questions, so I'd like just to see a presentation. There's two people in the community that plan to be here, I know, that want to just get a better understanding on that. I think it's something, there was a lot of confusion out there regarding the upcoming water rates.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
It may not be ripe, I'm going to steal city manager's phrase. Are we going to receive an update from our new, new-ish code enforcement officer just on activities and making sure that all of our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed?
Absolutely. I, you know, with the council's adoption of the updated ordinance, it is now, it's now taken effect. I think we're, you're going to see a flurry of activity in terms of enforcement actions being taken to address the current nuances that are significant to our community, so. More, more, more to come very, very soon.
I'm sorry, I, and, yeah, and I, and I realize too that, you know, there, there may be a balance between, is there enough data to, is there enough of the data to give a good report? I'll leave it up to your discretion as to when that update would be most appropriate.
And I would also, if you guys don't mind, Councilmember Cruz, go ahead.
Yes, I would also like to see a report on the animal control and how that has gone about. I also insist on us talking to our Cloverdale Homo Rancheria to see if we can have land acknowledgement for the future. So those are two future agenda items I'd like to see.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I know everybody wants to go home. So I think it was yesterday, a, a dog found me. I did not find a dog. It came to me when I called, and I, before I could even finish the conversation with the, that national 800 number on the tag, I found the person's direct cell number. It had etched it on their license, on the back of their license. And I called her or texted her, said, you know, you're, you're, is this your dog? I took a picture, texted it, is this your dog? It's in my backyard. And before I could get off the phone with the animal control number, my husband said, oh, they're at the front door. So when I, I also had contacted Bridget Wassam, who we've gotten a lot of good advice on this, and she said, you know, it's a really good idea to have, to give out tags with your cell number for your cat and your dog. And she said, there are organizations that, well, they can, they just bring a tag-making machine to like citrus fair events or street fairs and things like that. And we just might want to take a look at our contract and see if, if they have one of those tags and if they would be willing to, you know, do events with, with us. And if not, we may just want to get one of those tag makers, because that was just like super quick. And I think that, you know, with the whole dog tag issue and the chip and the 800 number, that was great before everybody had cell phones. Everybody has a lot, many, many, many people have cell phones now where you can just put that number on and your, your pet can get found. And she was very grateful because she actually, she is, was from Marin, and she was up here visiting a friend, and the dog escaped when they were working on the house. So it wasn't even, it wasn't even one of the usual suspects from my neighborhood, because I know who those dogs are, and I just grab them and, you know, take them inside and give them water or something. But it was somebody who was visiting the area, and if they didn't have that cell number on there, it would have been a long time to track the dog down. So I just thought it would be great if we could see if that, if that's in the contract and then help. That would be a great thing to do at either citrus fair or the sidewalk sales or things like that, is offer that service to Cloverdale residents. Oh, she was not happy. He was a, like the size of a pony, and she was at the window barking at him saying, get that thing out of here. So, yeah, she stayed inside, and I took him in, in the backyard. But it really was just an instant thing, and Bridget did recommend it as a great thing to do for, for local pet owners. Maybe something that we want to do to celebrate the opening of our dog park, knocking on wood again.
Councilmember Cruz, do you have anything, you have something else?
Yes, I would like also to see if we can consider discussing what kind of merchandise should not be sold at fairs and festivals in Cloverdale. And I particularly say this because at one of our celebrations, there was a gentleman selling toy guns. And given the state of affairs that we have experienced collectively as a nation, I think it's time that we also start educating our families about, and our vendors, about some things that perhaps should not be sold. So, I mean, maybe we're not in agreement of this, but perhaps it's something that we should consider.
Thank you. And I also want to revisit the idea of having a translator for our meetings so that we can start bringing in more of our population and making them feel inclusive or accepted here and free to speak. So I think that we really need to think about that. We're alienating a big group that doesn't feel comfortable to come here and speak to us with their concerns.
Thank you, Mayor Lance, because people approach me in that grocery store all the time. And I said, you need to come to city council. You need to speak to all of us, because I'm only one voice. And they are somewhat reluctant because they don't understand what goes on, and also because they feel that if they don't have proper English, they will not be heard. So something to consider, definitely. Thanks again.
All right, thank you. And meeting is adjourned at 9:03. Thank you all.